Can you go ahead and call the meeting to order? Commissioner Bone is going to lead us in invocation and pledge to this flag.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this evening and the chance we have to meet together this evening to discuss our city affairs. We're grateful for all those that serve the city and that live here and do their part to make Leesburg a good place to live. And we ask you to direct us this evening as we have our discussions and that we'll be able to discuss in a civil manner and make the decisions and move the city forward in a way that's best for all those that are here and who say these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one proclamation. I need your briefs. Okay. My authority vested in me is Mayor of the City of Leesburg, Florida. I do hereby proclaim the municipal election of the City of Leesburg, Florida to be held Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the purpose of electing three members of the City Commission for terms of four years beginning January 7, 2019. I specify that the office of the member of the City Commission now held by John Christian shall appear on the ballot as Seat 2, District 2. The office of the member of the City Commission now held by Robert Bob Bone shall appear on the ballot as Seat 4 at large. And the office of the member of the City Commission now held by H.D. Dan Robuck III shall appear on the ballot as Seat 5 at large. Qualifying begins at noon Monday, July 30, 2018, and ends at 4:00 p.m. Friday, August 3, 2018. All parties interested in qualifying for this election may do so at City Hall, City Clerk's Office, 501 West Meadow Street, Leesburg, Florida. The election will be held in conjunction with the county, state, and federal elections, and all precincts will be open. Witness my hand and seal of the City of Leesburg, Florida, this 25th day of June 2018. So now we can move on to the consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the Commissioner or staff wish to discuss any item, the procedure is as follows. One, pull the item from the consent agenda. Two, vote on remaining items with one roll call vote. Three, discuss each pulled item and vote by roll call. Do we have any items that we'd like to pull?
4C1, please.
Okay.
4B1.
Can I get a motion to approve the remaining items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes.
So on to 4B2?
1.
Oh, 1, sorry. 4B1. If someone could please introduce.
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction services agreement with utility service company Inc. for the College Street Water Tower rehabilitation for an amount not to exceed $170,100 and providing an effective date.
But just for the record, can everybody kind of speak up into the microphones? We've got a full house, so everybody wants to make sure they can hear. Is that better? It's still not?
They're on.
We'll address that.
I move to approve.
Second.
So I pulled this because the water tower design, and I already see that it's over budget a little bit, but I pulled up the company website and looked at this a little. And I know we're doing our logo on there. I don't know how big or anything that is, but on their website I saw these artsy or painted water towers. So I just wanted to pull it and say, I know we're over budget already on this, but I wanted to pull it and say, we're going to, you know, what are we looking at here logo-wise? And just if there was any discussion at all of doing something that had some, that drew some more attention or anything like that at the commission.
What we did with the tower at Newell Hill was a solid, kind of a shadowy, black, it's actually dark green, logo. We were concerned when we did that tower that we'd have difficulty matching the colors and that if we did match them at the beginning, they would fade. So that's why we ended up with that relatively plain logo. And we planned on doing the same thing.
And that's why I pulled it, just if there was any discussion at all, wanted to be had, if we're just good with the plain one or wanted to do anything more. No cost difference or anything on that.
Do you have a cost difference, Lisa?
We didn't look into doing anything different than the...
What you're concerned about is the fading of the paint, don't you?
Initially, matching colors because it's kind of died down now, but when we did the tower at Newell Hill, there was all kinds of discussion on the stick-on logos that we've got and whether we were matching the colors that they were supposed to be right and everything. So we were a little bit concerned about that.
So I did notice in the bid that there was some large discrepancy between that part of the bid, of the breakdown of the logo painting versus some of the others. Like this one is, I think, is 5,000. There was one that was less than that even, but then the other ones were, I think, maybe 20, it was like 25,000 and so forth. So I don't know the difference in what we're getting, you know, what people were bidding on there for that part of it particularly. And then the other thing I saw in the bid was just that their containment part was, their containment part of the bid was pretty low compared to some of the others, too. So I don't, is that any...
Yeah, we initially were concerned that the whole tower would have to be tinted and then sandblasted to get the old paint off. And we found out that that's not the case, that we can do it with a, we can basically encapsulate what's there now and not have to worry about too much containment. So the smaller number on containment, I felt, was not unrealistic.
And then the logo itself, so let's see, well, actually, they weren't that big a difference. There were some that were like around 20,000, I think, and 15,000. That's satisfactory.
Well, it's just hard to tell where those guys are trying to make their money and where they're trying to win the bid.
But it's all the same logo design that they are, they were all bidding on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I had on.
Any discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes.
Okay, so on to 4C1. If someone would like to introduce.
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement to donate property at 2319 West Side Drive to the Leesburg Community Development Corporation of Leesburg Incorporated and providing an effective date.
And that's the stain, so I can't make a motion.
I'll move for approval if we have, if necessary to have discussion on this.
So we can discuss, yes, okay. Otherwise, we can't do anything.
Then that needs a second.
Second. Okay. The reason I asked is to be pulled, months ago, I asked for the accounting from the Leesburg Community Development Corporation and was given 2016. I have yet to see an updated version of where the money from the other homes that we have handed to the CDC. I would like to get the updated accounting. And for that reason, I am, and not having gotten it yet, I am not going along with this.
Okay, so for the record, you did receive those records after your request?
2016.
You received the records that you requested, and we had that discussion, and 2016 was not available yet because I think because of the 501C...
You gave me 2016, I did not receive 2017.
2017.
That's correct.
So 2017 was not yet available because I don't think, based on the 501(c)(3) or nature or whatever, that reporting is not due till later in the year. So I'll go back and follow up on that.
That's fine. And in the meantime, I can't go along with this.
And just for the record, I'm the chairman of the board of the CDC. David Logan's been our accountant since 1997. Being that we are nonprofit, our 990s always pushed to the back for profit and businesses. So we normally get our 990s probably July, October, however the season is. We'll be more than happy, as I told Al, if you want our monthly financials, we get them every month. Certified public accountant. We never had a problem since 1997. The city gets our financials every year for our CRA. And for us to get into the 50% of the CRA, they get a report every year from the CDC. So whatever the CDC's able to provide, that's no problem. Books are open to city council or anyone else who wants to see what we do.
Was this, any other interest that was shown in this?
No, it was a request from CDC.
Yeah, I personally feel that if we're going to give or sell property, you know, real property particularly, that we should have some opportunity like we did with the other ones. And I do have some different feelings about giving the properties away. I think residential property should be leveled and set aside and have some design criteria for developers to give it to them or whatever down the road if they'll build a house that meets the standards that we set.
I mean, given the location and the disrepair of this house, you know...
Oh, it's in bad shape, so, but we've seen some other bad ones that have been repaired and...
Yeah.
And it does get back to the property value thing. And I know the one on Sixth Street there sold for like 75,000, I think. And I just, I have a challenge with, you know, creating low square footage comparables for Leesburg. It's a real challenge that we face. And I think we perpetuate that by continuing to do that. This one's a little different neighborhood than on Sixth Street, but it works out there.
Then... So it's not going to pass because all three of us would have to vote on it. So are you just not in favor at all or would you rather table it till you can get the financials and then reconsider it?
That's fine, but right now I'm not...
I understand, understand, so...
And I have to say, I mean, with respect to Commissioner Christian, I mean, it's something that I do get some feedback from in the community now and then is that, you know, how does, we just give a piece of property to the CDC without an opportunity for others to be involved with it? And with all the good that the CDC does and their purpose and everything, I mean, it's, there's some community, you know, questions about that as well.
And I think maybe the CDC should come and talk to the commission about the relationship the city has with the CDC. It's different than other nonprofits because how the CDC was formed, there's a federal consent decree that talks about the development of the CDC and the city and the relationship. And maybe this commission probably needs to have a formal conversation about the federal consent decree and that our nonprofit is much different than any other nonprofit in the City of Leesburg. So when the community comes, I think they need to be educated on the relationship the city and the CDC has and should have and should continue to have. I think I would say the CDC, every house we've got from the city, we renovated and put a first-time home buyer in his home, which is a Leesburg resident per se, who were saying, you have a place to live in Leesburg. Now, beside this house, which is right behind my church's thrift store on a dirt road, there's three vacant lots right beside that's for sale right now that no developers came in in the last three or four years to build a house. In fact, one was just torn down. The house right down the road is in very much disrepair. This house owned by the City of Leesburg, as you can see, needs to be cut, it's boarded up, and one went on the side. Homeless people have been actually going to live in it. So I would suggest, no matter what we do, the city immediately goes out and cuts the property and makes it look presentable. So we're not being a derelict property owner as well. And that was the whole interest of us coming to the city because this property looks bad, it has a red tag on it from the City of Leesburg. So we're well aware of the condition of property, but as you can see, nothing's been done in the last four or five months. And as a property owner next door, I would say this is bad management of the City of Leesburg. So if we're going to take that approach, I think we need to first cut our grass, board it up, and keep homeless people coming to live in. I just had to call the city to, because I had one living under my truck, my box truck right beside the thrift store. So we have a problem. So I think if we're going to sit here and just say, hey, let's do nothing, I think we should make sure that the property that we get through foreclosure, that we maintain them. I found out about this property because the last property, we didn't do our quit-claim deed in time. So I had to find out when it actually got filed, which was 90 days after the CDC took ownership and saw this property, which I called and tried to inquire about buying it about a year ago. So now here it is beside my property, which I maintain, but now this property owned by the City of Leesburg, it's not being maintained. So I think what we need to do is get a program that when we acquire properties, how do we release these properties to get them off our books so we're not cutting and maintaining them, costing taxpayers money? And not be all out and have to sell now.
I agree with that. So it shouldn't look like that if we own it. It shouldn't look like it doesn't.
We got a quality issue, I think we need to do more about it.
So could we get, maybe get a motion to table this so we can have a presentation from the CDC and financials? And then potentially, I think it sounds like we need to have a discussion about how we're handling our foreclosed property in general.
Motion to table.
I'll second, but I, yeah, I think Commissioner Dennison is, you know, what she's getting at is just looking at some numbers, and it would seem like it would be fairly simple that, you know, particularly on the properties that the city donates or that the CDC buys, you know, at low, I think they paid for a couple of those properties, that there's some kind of report back on those properties at least. Not that you have to, you know, see the whole, all the books of the CDC, but to know what's happening with those particular properties.
We'll give whatever we need. You have all the books, particular properties, CRA monies that we get, and that's not a problem. We do it every year in a way. This finance has our CRA report every year.
And I think you did give a general report on the 1 on Sixth Street. You said this is what it sold for. I don't know how much you put into it or anything, but we know what...
We give a cost analysis of each property.
Thank you.
In the meantime, can we get it, can it get cleaned up, Herb?
Yes.
Yeah, any discussion from the public? A roll call.
Commissioner Dennison?
On the proposition to...
Table.
Table, yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on. Moving on to the regular agenda, public hearing and non-routine items, 5A, if I could, someone to introduce?
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, creating Section 15-18 of the City Code, defining disorderly conduct and prescribing penalties for engaging in disorderly conduct, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
There were some things that Commissioner Hurley had asked to be corrected in this. I was just wondering if it's been done?
Is Chief in here? I don't see him. I'm going to say we did.
Okay.
So I think we're ready to go.
Okay, that's fine.
Any discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes.
Okay, on to 5B. Someone can introduce.
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, correcting a Scrivener's error in the legal description of ordinance 15-50, which said ordinance did annex certain real property consisting of approximately 104 acres being generally located on the north side of Morningside Drive and east of Silver Lake Drive, lying in Section 1, Township 19 South, Range 25 East, Lake County, Florida, providing for a corrected legal description and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Yep, it's a first reading. Any discussion?
This property, it's been sold right or is it...
It's under contract right now.
That's probably one of the issues that needs to be straightened out.
And I'd like to, if we're going to, I know it's an error on our part, but we probably don't have to correct it. And given that they haven't, the property owner hasn't exactly done what they've said they were going to do, I'd at least like the developer or the representative to be here at the next one so we can discuss the future plans of the property and make sure everything's still on track or not on track. Any discussion from the public? Okay, is that a layover to our next reading? Move on to 5C.
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 18.74 acres from R3 PDO Plan Development Overlay to R3 PDO Plan Development Overlay, to change the permitted use from townhouses to single-family homes for a property located north of U.S. Highway 441, west of North Lake Avenue, and north of Furnery Lane, as legally described in Section 24, Township 19 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Discussion. Is it okay with us?
I think, what, there was, from what I saw in here, there's that vinyl fence issue.
I was going to bring up, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But I know that that catches your attention, and so I just brought that up. And so I think, you know, what's going on here is to convert this from reducing the density there, and it looks like some nice shotgun-style houses are going to go in there possibly, so...
Yeah, so I would just ask that we change the vinyl to require PVC or some sort of concrete. They have PVC in their submitted documents, so I think that looks nice, but the actual PD itself allows for just plain vinyl fence.
PVC?
PVC, or, I mean, if they wanted to go further and do concrete and stucco or something, they could, certainly would be okay with that.
And then the only other thing I have, which I don't have anything concrete to say, is that it's a landscaping, tree, shrubbery issue, and I don't have, I'm not familiar enough with the codes to know, but sometimes I feel like when I, when I see one of our new developments, whether it's a standalone commercial building or if it's a residential neighborhood, and then I see a commercial building somewhere else that's new or a residential neighborhood, I'm like, well, why do they have so many more trees, bigger trees, thicker bushes, more bushes than what we have? And are we getting everything that we can in these or we...
Dan Middleplanting, a zoning manager. The open space and buffer area requirements are taken straight out of the city's code. If you would like that to be beefed up some, the applicant is here, we can work with him to do that.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't have any, anything concrete to say, this is five trees short per whatever or anything.
Right. One of the issues is when you take...
It's just an overall observation that it seems that we're pretty light usually in comparing to what I see in neighboring communities.
Yes, sir. And sometimes in those neighboring communities, years down the road, what you'll have is two canopy trees that are planted too close together, and they come in and interfere with each other so they don't grow to their full height. That's, it does look a little less intense in terms of the planting at first. It's really looking at it from a long-term standpoint. If you want us to increase that, then we can, we can work with the applicant and do that. But that's, that's the reason we have those spacings, is based on trying to do good management with the trees and the mature sizes versus what looks good, you know, as soon as it's planted.
And I think that...
But that's obviously that, I can see the point.
Yeah, that connects to that, when I see them, when I see our developments, you know, three years down the road, the stuff hasn't come in, you know, yours, you know, some of it's died and never been replaced. It didn't get thick, it didn't grow tall, and so the things that you're concerned about actually looks thinner than when it was even started, so...
True, understood.
But I don't know, like I said, I don't, that's just for discussion again of the commission or if your thoughts or if the developer has some ideas of maybe extra they can do, because I don't know, say, hey, throw one more tree per lot or anything.
Okay.
I don't...
So Dan, where would the entrance be? Would it be on Bentley Road or be on North Lake Avenue?
The entrance would be on Lake.
Lake.
Bentley, I believe we were just having an emergency access on Bentley for a crash gate or something similar.
Commissioner Bone was talking about even if we worked with the applicant, all the entrance signs coming in, because that's what people are going to actually see, unless you live in that development. Because I think sometimes our entrance way are not really that appeaseable to the eyes. So I think maybe we can work on the entrance way, the signage, and maybe some of the trees and...
Some additional landscaping, things like that. I think the applicant would be, would welcome the opportunity to do that.
And are there sidewalks that go through this, too?
Sidewalks are required as a part of the code, yes, sir.
I think they got some, the trees broke some on Lake.
I think, well, to Commissioner Bone's point, would it be helpful for me, because we had a big gap in communities coming up at all?
Yes.
If we have some examples of some that we are under the newer landscaping code, because I imagine this has changed over the years?
Yes, sir.
That are, you know, three-plus years out, and maybe you could send us one or two so we could, so, because I don't know which ones were built when, under what codes, and that would help me get an idea of how I feel about it.
We can put in a cross-section of a typical planting in the PUD for the next reading, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
And kind of, I guess what Commissioner Mayor's talking about is if you chose like something from 2015 as opposed to something that we're doing now, and what it will kind of look like.
Okay.
About what you're talking about.
If you could just show me an actual development, like point me in one that was done, you know, somewhere between 2010 and 2015 under our codes, if there were any.
Not much.
That's what I'm struggling with, you know. When I see one that looks bad, is it because it was built under different codes that we have now, or is it because we need to change these? I don't know the answer.
I'll take yours off.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolfheart, who is the purchaser of the property, informed me that he has some examples on other developments that he has done, that he's planning to do at this one.
Okay.
And we'll get those and then forward those to you, if that will work.
And that's more of a broad comment, I mean, just about our PUDs in general for me.
But it's true that 2010 to 2015 was pretty lean when it came to residential.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? It's first reading, so we'll lay over to our next meeting. On to 5D, if someone would like to introduce.
Introduce and recommend, read by title only, Mr. Mayor.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, vacating a 38-square-foot section of easement, consisting of an area approximately 1 foot wide by 38 feet long. Said property generally located on Lot 16, Live Oak Ridge, as recorded in Plat Book 13, page 24, of the public records of Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Any comments from the commission? Comments from the public?
So this is a first reading?
First reading, yes.
So I know it says that giving up this 1 foot by 38 foot strip isn't going to negatively affect, but we're sure about that, it won't have any issues?
Yeah.
That's a nightmare when you build your swimming pool and it's like...
Sorry if you have questions, that's me.
That's, yeah, that's a little bit of a nightmare when you realize that you crossed over somewhere you shouldn't have. I'm fine.
It's not on top of the utilities or anything if that's already been...
No, it's just in that 10-foot area.
Right.
Okay. All right, so this will lay over to our next meeting.
Okay.
So on to 5E, if someone would like to introduce. Thank you.
I'll introduce and ask to be read by title only, please.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an interlocal agreement with Lake County Board of County Commissioners, Florida, for the purchase of new replacement radio equipment for the electric, fire, and police departments, using a financing instrument with the Board of County Commission, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute documents related to the financing and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, right?
Yep.
All right, on to 5...
On that last note, you'll see those numbers that have been added to the budget, and we funded those payments with, we're proposing to fund that with DST revenue for an extra.
All you, Al.
All me. We put together a quick presentation for you. For those of you in the audience, we're working on our audio difficulties. I'll speak up during the presentation here. But essentially, the budget, the budget, the agenda has the presentation for a visioning and strategic discussion. I don't think we really need any response on that this evening. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. Wow, that's going the other way now. We've talked about this a little bit in the past, and as we'll be incorporating these type of things into the budget, the vision, strategy, branding, RFP is out, where we can come back and revisit these. But I also thought it was important to use that as a framework, so that as we moved into the budget process, started putting plans together to spend the capital reserves that we've built, that it does go back towards a vision, it does go back towards a greater master plan. So I thought it was important to revisit that before we get into the pool conversation this evening. So with that, I wanted to, I wanted to start out on the visioning portion, and then move into the pool portion. So the purpose of this portion of the program is to review, establish, discuss the vision statement. Again, always going back, reviewing your financial position, our recommendations for what we think that you can spend safely and conservatively. Identify goals, and in that, in so doing, discuss what we've kind of accomplished, and what we can accomplish, and how that fits into this vision, mission, strategy that we're trying to put together, and then finally answer the swimming pool question. So first is our vision statement. The vision statement I presented to you back earlier this winter was basically to use history, to use our ambiance, to use our charm, to use our resources, and become a great community. So that's, that's the out-there pie-in-the-sky vision, a diverse community working energetically in collaboration to ensure that the city of Leesburg utilizes its history, ambiance, and natural resources to become and stay a vibrant community. The mission then becomes, well, how do we achieve the vision? And the mission statement basically is more that governmental, we're gonna use good resources, sound management, and we're gonna promote things that help us accomplish our, our vision. So to provide effective, efficient municipal services that promote public safety, economic growth, and quality of life. I think those three things, public safety, economic growth, and quality of life are all the things that we constantly work and manage on in different ways or another, and if we manage those things right, and have a good mission there, then we'll achieve that vision. So we put together those five goals, and I wanted to go over the five goals, and then I'll provide examples of what we've done, and hopefully where we're going, and I'm gonna work it backwards and I'll get there in a second. So there's basically five goals. Four of them, I think, deal with big, broad topics, and then one of them is that governmental topic that helps accomplish the first four. So those are, number one, to eliminate blight and stimulate growth by advancing neighborhood redevelopment, creating new economic opportunities, and investing in infrastructure. Goal two, promote Leesburg's natural resources and slogan as a lakefront city to enhance recreational and leisure opportunities. Goal three, lead the industry in providing high-quality, low-cost, publicly-owned utility service. Goal four, deliver the highest level of professional public safety services that ensure security for Leesburg's residents and businesses. And then goal five, foster an environment where local governments promotes creativity, transparency, and wisely uses public resources. So before we get into accomplishments, let me step back and talk a little bit about money. I'm gonna say now, about four years ago, the commission established, I think, a blueprint where we've, we've, we've almost accomplished those things, being with the resource center, the things at Venetian Gardens, the other reinvestment things came up, and the commission said, you had certain goals, that we achieved those, we needed to make certain improvements, and we want to do that fiscally conservative. And we, we basically came up with the pay-as-you-go plan for major CIPs, so that we could reinvest and live within our means. So when we moved through the years, I think I've showed you this number over here, that somewhere along the way, we've, we've generated about $18.6 million. So let's revisit how we got there. Right now, your reserve cash balance for the general fund was 12-point, by the way, we reviewed these numbers about a month ago, when we set up the community center construction reserve account right here, and so these numbers should look pretty familiar to you. For the public, it's a lot fuller meeting, so I thought it'd be a good review. So our general fund review cash is sitting around 3.4 million. Our staff recommendation to you has been to always keep that, somewhere around 7.5 million. That's not quite double the GFO recommendation. The GFO is the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that a general fund for municipal government keep about 90 days of their operating cash in the bank for emergencies. For us, that's somewhere between 4.5 to 4.8 million dollars. Our recommendation is, eh, keep a little more than that. So if you subtract that number from that number, you end up with about 4.8 million dollars of cash that you could spend on capital projects as a pay-as-you-go type plan. Recently then, we sold the fiber for a net of about 8.2 million, and right now, from that sale, in the bank, we're sitting on 4.5 million. So this number plus this number equals this number, which is about, it's 9.399 million, so let's call that 9.4 million dollars. So that's what we have in the bank right now. Hold on, let's back up. We've done two major actions. We've, one, I think last month, we pulled 3.5 million dollars actually out of the fiber sale number to reserve, so we have a 7.8 million dollar community center allocation, all cash. And two, we also put in the FSL mall for the grant, and that was half a million, which we scheduled to take out of the general fund. So of this 9.3 million, we've actually spent this number and this number. So that's 4 million, so four less that, you're actually sitting not on 9.3 million right now, but on 5.3. So just a tick under 5.4 million dollars cash. That's what you have to work with right now in your pocket. However, I think you do need to look a little bit into the future, because we are scheduled to get the anticipated fiber cash, 1.875 million for payment two, and one point, the same thing again for payment three, which puts another 3.7 million. So you're really sitting on this number and this number in about, really in about a year. The next payment comes December 18, well, let's call it 18 months. The next, the next payment comes December 18, the final payment, December 19. So I think it's reasonable to plan for this, for future projects, but based on where you were going, you still want to be maybe slightly conservative. Then there's the other potential cash things. This is still, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna call this pie in the sky, because I think these things will happen, but they're not here as clear as this. And that's the sale of the Villages property, we'll net out 4.4, and the Core Slab property will plan out 1. So I do think that this is money you can count on, but the reason I put it in yellow is, I don't think it's money that you can even count on yet for the general fund, because I think we need to make sure all our Is are dotted and our Ts are crossed over, and at the 470 property with infrastructure modifications and those type of things, so that doesn't hurt that fund. I think, I anticipate maybe you'll get a couple of bucks out of that, maybe to come back to the general fund, but I don't think you can count on that very soon. So where do we get the 18 million dollar number, just so everybody sees it? It's this, plus, it's actually this, plus that, plus that, plus that, is 18.6. Also, keep in mind, we're also working on potential reoccurring revenues. So these are other opportunities that are out there for the city to collect enterprise monies and use it for capital improvements. And that is the gas sale with partnering with the Villages, and that has the potential to net 2 million dollars annually, and then the bulk Villages wastewater agreement, that has the process to distribute about a million annually. And then also too, remember as, as we got into this pay-as-you-go process, we always said that the DST revenues, the first thing that we needed to do for that was pay the debt on certain improvements that we did in the past, and secondly, pay for public safety improvements, equipment, the radios this evening, for example. But every year, there's somewhere about $750,000 of free money to, I don't wanna say surplus, but that's kind of, we earmarked that as, that's like our project money. We had these big giant projects, and we kind of had these maintenance capital improvement projects that were funded. So, so in addition to these things, you know, I think probably it's realistic that in the next three to five years, that this pot of money, this additional 3.7 million dollars will be there for the commission to go over and, and plan for capital improvements. Good time for a question.
Sorry to interrupt, before, before you move on from that slide, so it's not 18.6 million, it's really more like 14.5-ish, right? Am I, am I missing something here?
No, it's 18, it's-
20 more above available.
Right. So you're taking, you're, you're going back, taking that generated today, cash generated today, but, but in the next column down, you have to, you're subtracting out of that and getting to the 5.3, right? So that's really the-
But when you put it all together, because remember, we're talking about cash that we've developed, you know, I don't think you can underscore that. So if, if I'm doing my math right, we, we've got this 9.3 million, we've got this 3.75 million, and we've got this 5.4 million, so that number, that number, and that number-
But you've gotta subtract out what you've already allocated.
Which is, which is what I did for you, Commissioner. So this number right here, and I was very clear about that. I said, right now, you are sitting on 5.4 million dollars, which you can spend safely. Coming up, you've got this money, which I think you can count on, and I think it's, you can, you can plan on projects out in year two and year three, and as we get into the other charts, I'll come to show you those numbers. I think you can count on that number. This number is 5.4, and I unequivocally said, we need to keep that over there in 470s, which is right now, and the sanitary fund, so that's sanitary fund money. We need to take care of 470 money, 470 issues first, then bring that money over. So the number you're sitting on today is 5.4, so that's what you've got in your pocket.
Right.
Okay?
But I don't want, I don't, I feel like I was being misled a little bit to say that we have total crash, that we got 18 million of cash available, we don't.
Okay. What I want, what I wanted, my purpose in giving you the 18 million dollar number was not to confuse the commission. That's why I put this in green. That's why I put that in yellow. That's supposed to be yellow, I don't know if it looks like yellow, okay? But that's certainly yellow. So I wanted to, I did, the purpose of breaking this up is two things. Thing number one, and most importantly, that's why I hit it first and put it in green. That's what you got right now, that's what we're recommending you spend right now. But I also think it's important, this pay-as-you-go plan has been very successful. I think we've been very creative, very open, you know, and it's that oxymoron of creatively, what is it, creatively spending resources wisely, and with transparency, if you can do that, right? But so, that's been, I think, a great hallmark of this commission, is to put this together. So on one hand, I don't want to confuse you, but on the other hand, I want to kind of blow your horn too, and say, this is, you know, we have put together 18 million. But what, right now, is 5.4. That's what we're dealing with.
And then, is there, there's some money that's gotta come out of that Villages money too, though, or is that the net money after?
That's the net money, after the sale.
After, after the spray field and everything else too?
Right, the EPA money. And I went over that number with you in the other presentation, that's why I kept this one shorter. Roughhouse, that number, let's just talk roughhouse numbers. The wholesale to the Villages on now the 1,115 acres, is gonna be about 7.8 million at 7,000 an acre, and then you gotta net out, there's 636.6 acres that was EPA property, you gotta net out 75% of the two appraisals, which was 7,008.50 an acre, they get 75% of that back. So I think the, the EPA is looking at about a 3.4 million dollar check, and so you're netting now 4.4 million from the 7.8 million. So that number was in there. So moving on, let's go by goals. I think for, for the purpose this evening, I want to go backwards now on the goals, because most of the big things that we've discussed, in my opinion, are really goal one or goal two, which is reinvest in blight, or provide leisure, recreational kind of quality-of-life issues. So I want to blow through kind of goals five through three, and then really drum on goals one and two, because those are the things that I think that we've really been dealing with the most to date. So five, foster environment where a local government promotes creativity, transparency. You know, these are the type of things that I think you direct us as staff, we bring on new staff for ANDI, the IT improvements that we do, keep taxes low, pay-as-you-go community capital improvement plans. The communication utility sale is one of these things where we're trying to find money, recreating the 470 base, and reestablishing that, that organizational compensations where we've been going through and finding that stuff. And so our new task, it's, you know, a little bit blah, but, you know, we're gonna continue to do those things, continue to seek improvements, be creative, be fiscally conservative, spend our resources widely, so that's that type of goal. And I see that more as the employees, this is what you have us for, to help implement your mission. Goal four, the public safety goal. Public safety is 65 to 70% of the general fund, it's a major thing we do, so I don't think you can have a goal statement without talking about public safety. Some of our accomplishments, the accreditation, the police officer increase, which was, which was a big deal for us, the fire assessment fee, which we implemented to, to shift financial blocks, some new tasks and new fire equipment we got last year, we're gonna have to talk about those type of grows. And there's some other public safety things that I kind of go back with, with goal number one as well. The additional officers was, 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 well, we already said that was an accomplishment. Number three is lead the industry. I think an important thing here with our utility system is really the way we leverage those utilities. I think the number one priority has to be, we gotta be competitive, we gotta provide good service, we gotta be customer responsive, and after that, we can take surpluses and then use the publicly-owned infrastructure and enterprise funds then to help us with our missions of, of capital improvements. So I think we've done a ton of, of stuff here. We've mitigated the smart grid stuff, we reduced electric rates, I think our hurricane response fits into that. We did the new wastewater treatment disposal systems, which was doing away with the application of sludge, which really opened up the 470 property for sale, the Villages bulk treatment deal, the Villages gas deal. I think those are all great accomplishments of how we're using our utilities wisely. Tasks that are ahead of us is the turnpike expansion, we're gonna need to expand those type of things, the water service look that we're doing in South Leesburg to figure out how we do tackle all the growth things that even tonight you dealt with a little bit, the 441 widening, which the commission wanted to bring back up, which is now back on the table at FODT, FDOT. And then every, every budget we've done since we made that first initial electric rate reduction, we've really tried to offset any type of mileage increase with a corresponding electric rate reduction to keep our funds interdependent, and be wise on the government side, as well as, as being wise on the utility side. So I think that's an important goal that we always need to have. I don't think we discuss these things a lot, because I think these issues seem to be no-brainers, and I think our utilities have, have been run and managed very well by the commission, which has allowed, like hopefully, like the wastewater treatment plant, turnpike, I mean, that's, that's a big deal. But with the deal that we, we manage with the Villages, you're, you're getting 9 million dollars of reserve money to help offset that cost, so we don't have to, we'll publicly discuss it, but it's not a huge issue, because it, it was seamless. And, and that's where some of that, also some of that 470 money needs to go. Okay, so now, into kind of the bigger task that will lead us into the pool discussion. Goal number two is to promote Leesburg's natural resource and slogan as the lakefront city to enhance our recreational leisure opportunities. So I, I think that's obviously saying, we want to make Leesburg a great quality-of-life place. So one of our accomplishments in that regard, I think, is Venetian Gardens, and that's the, the easiest one to point out. Phase one, phase two, and phase three. Those things said, we want to bring back the gardens, make it a location point, and so we've moved ahead in that. The things I think to, to flourish in goal number two, and tasks that you may want to consider are obviously tonight, the swimming pool facility, which I think fits into that lakefront ambiance and recreational leisure service type of city, the marina expansion, we, we've been in and out with whether we sell the marina, lease the marina, and I think as we get into the budget process, I think you really need to talk about an option here, where we expand the marina. The marina, since we've increased rates, now you have a competitive rate that's now market, that's really returning nicely for the general fund. It's not a huge number, but we look at the budget numbers, in the last couple of years, the marina's been turning 175,000 back into the general fund. It's not a big number in some of the other transfers we talk about, but for the general fund, that is a big number, and in some of the proposals we've seen, we lose that completely. So I think that that's a service that maybe we want to expand. The Venetian Gardens downtown link has, has been on the books in Leesburg since the early 90s into the 80s, where there was the concept of building pedestrian walkways that link Venetian Gardens back to downtown. Now that we've invested heavily in Venetian Gardens, I think that personally, this is probably your number one goal that you need to do, to capitalize on making sure that Main Street flourishes as much as Venetian Gardens. On that note, there was this tunnel bridge concept over Dixie, which, which probably needs to be talked at. I'll get into that in a financing way in a little bit. Cultural Arts Center has been something that's been talked about. And then let me, let me jump to the bottom two, and then come back to that Pat Thomas Field one. In discussing around the community, a couple of other things that have popped up that I wanted to bring to your attention is the historical museum renovation. The historical museum up here on Fifth, it is in bad shape, so we probably do need to take a look at that. The trail system has been on the books now, I think we did the master plan in 2005. Commissioner Bone, you've brought that up a number of times- Commissioner Bone, you've brought that up a number of times. We always throw some money at it, uh, but we really haven't been aggressive with it. So, with some of these funds and with this slogan, maybe the trail system is something that you want to perpetually put a little more effort into and place it as a higher priority. And then, just out there, pie in the sky is, maybe we need to do a total remake over at Pat Thomas Field, and, and get into the minor league expansion type of thing. I think that's pie in the sky. I think that's a huge number. When we get to the budget charts, y- you'll see, I think it's fun to talk about, but I really don't think it's realistic. Goal number one, now switching over to eliminate blight and stimulate growth by advancing neighborhood redevelopment, creating new economic opportunities, and, and investing in infrastructure. Uh, some of the accomplishments, the resource center, the corridor improvements, the seaplane ramp, the villages' sale, the demolition program, we've increased code enforcement, the facade sign landscape program, which we've put together. So, I think all those things go towards increasing tax base, um, tackling blight, and, and making Leesburg economically better. New tasks on your horizon, the teen center, continued thorough, fair corridor improvements. So, even though we've done a bunch of them, there's still, some that are still out there. West Main Street, East Main Street, Dixie Main entryway, by the way, you've already have that scheduled, um, so that's ready to go. 441 widening, that's already been programmed as far as an engineering standpoint, it's a water sewer, um, and, and electric is doing some work as well. The airport entry, I, that's not a big one. You guys talked about that a little bit to scale that back from the plan. South 27th entryway and 27th corridor continues to be another topic of a corridor that we continue, need to focus on. Think you need to continue the, the FSL program, um, and also, kind of new, which we'll be proposing to you hopefully in a couple more weeks, is maybe the consideration of a residential housing rehab program, where we help folks, um, assist with improving the facades and housing in, in certain corridors, um, within the community. Another concept you may want to look at is with the sale of the 470 property, maybe we need to look back at buying more acreage for developing another industrial park and getting back into the industrial development game. I think that will take an investment in buying some more property somewhere. And then also, you know, I don't think we can ignore the homelessness issue, or at least, not, continue not to talk about it. So, those are from a staff level and from a community level, that, how we've kind of pieced together things that I think that the commission should consider. How do we do it financially? I broke them down basically into projects that, um, I think you need to make priorities, and then I broke them down into projects of, uh, I think this is things that maybe you want to consider in out years, and then broke it down into projects that, kind of fun to talk about, but I don't think it's realistic. But those things just fit with the vision, so if it ever pops up, it's kind of on the table. So, the immediate capital improvement priorities that, that I brought before, uh, the commission. The first one, I, I'm sure this is hard for everybody to see, that this first one is the Venetian Gardens downtown link. I brought you a budget estimate as of last week of about 1.5 million. Actually, I think that number's probably going to, I think that number's a little bit high. Um, we, we, we did finally get a little bit of an estimate from our architect. He thinks some corridor numbers, and depending on how big we go with that, is in the neighborhood of 750,000. That's actually a really good number for us, because if it's in that 750,000 ball range, it's really going to fit nicely in the downtown CRA. Right now, you've got about $600,000 cash there. So, if you do this project, what I tried to do over here, um, is, is show you, um, how we're impacting that 5.4 million dollars that you're sitting on right now. So, that's really, I would, I would recommend that if we do this project, or you give the go-ahead to start planning for that project, I think that really can stay in the CRA fund, so you don't have an impact. Let me bring up the thing too. I know it's been in the paper. I think Tom Frost has talked to maybe some of you individually, or all of you individually. The only thing that I, um, would bring up there is that concept that's been floated about closing Market Street. I will say, on a staff level, we haven't really talked about that. I think that may be a concept you want to consider. I don't have a lot of information to bring to you on that. I know Mr. Frost has thought about it a lot. Um, I, I don't want to say that that's going to compete with Venetian Gardens, but I think it will a little bit, so we may have to prioritize that. I do have a meeting set up with Mr. Frost on Thursday to flush that concept a little bit more out. The next concept there is the swimming pool. We are next going to show you a bunch of slides of, of different levels of swimming pool. I think a good budget number for a swimming pool for the commission, if you consider that, is going to be around $3 million. That is a cash hit on your, on your, on your fund. The marina expansion, let me jump, a teen center is another concept that's been talked about a lot. $2 million impact, that, um, I put that that will have about a half a million dollar impact, because I think you fund it with cash, and you fund it with grant opportunities that are out there. So, I don't think that full 2 million hits your cash position. The marina expansion, I think if you do that, I would take somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. The numbers that I would put is a renovation of the facilities out there, as well as additional slips. I would recommend that if you do that, you do a short-term note, and use the new revenues that you generate from slips to pay for that note. Finally, uh, we've got the, um, continued corridor improvements. I think to finish all the corridors easily, you, you're looking around 2.5 million. That doesn't include, well, I'll come to that in a minute. Um, and I, I think you use special revenues kind of incrementally, and just kind of tink those projects away, so you don't hurt your cash position. At the end of the day, with these numbers, I projected about a 4.7 million dollar hit to your reserve, uh, so from the 5.4, that leaves you with about 6, 650,000, um, so that's what you would be left with. So, if you said, "Yeah, let's do all these projects tonight," I'm going to say, you've pretty much spent almost, you know, just a tick under 5 million. Less, I would throw back a little bit in there. So, I, instead of sitting on 650, 100,000, by the way, you'd maybe be sitting around a million. So, you, if, if you say tonight, build a pool for 3 million, build a teen center and pay for half of it with grant money, you're looking at spending 4 of the 5.3 that you have right now. That's pretty much what that shows. Second-tier projects, homelessness, depending on how, you know, that's just, I, that, that's been a really tough nut to crack. Um, obviously, tonight was one of the ordinances you put in place to help do that. I do recommend that the commission does try to build coalition with the county and other cities. If we go it alone, we got the Dr. Marbut report, so basically, we know if we go it alone, we're looking at, you know, somewhere around a million dollars to build a facility, and then operations costs are probably somewhere around half a million. I think those numbers can get tweaked down, but if we get serious about homelessness, and we feel like we have to go it alone, those are the out, outstretches of those numbers. Trails, uh, my recommendation on trails is if you go that route, um, we do have, I think it's the 2004 master plan, uh, what I would suggest is we bring it back to the commission. We go through, make sure we like the old plan, um, so we probably need to spend a couple of dollars on maybe some fees to help us go through that and weed out what we do and what we don't like. Not a lot, and then just incrementally fund that. The tunnel issue, uh, that's, that's $3 million if we really want to build that link. West Main Street is, um, improvements from, say, Main out towards, um, 44. I think that's a $10 million project to put, um, curb and gutter and fill in those ditches. The East Main Street project, I think that's 2.5. Main, Dixie gateway, repeat what we've done on, on 27, out on Dixie and Main, um, about 1.8 million. And then, your museum, I don't know what the cost on that. It's going to be a few hundred thousand dollars. Long-term capital projects, you know, if you did something crazy with Pat Thomas, you're looking at 25 million. If you do Performing Arts Center, I think you're looking at somewhere around 15 million. So, that's obviously why I put those as long, long terms, because I, I don't know if those numbers are realistic. Do you guys have any questions on that part of the presentation before we move into the
Al, real quick, um, when you talked about some of the long-term projects, East Main Street, um, corridor Dixie, you didn't talk about how you were going to fund those. Are you looking at CRA funding, or how are you looking at funding those?
I think that, yeah, I didn't move into funding those, because they were a little bit out. I would go back towards whatever cash position you have, um, and, and DSTs, and then hopefully new, um, new dollars from transfers from gas.
So, you're going to come back and rank those?
Yeah, that's what, yeah. But that's why I put those, that's why I put those second tier, because I think these are your first-tier projects. And I think once you get these projects done, you'll know where you're at in terms of these, um, outlying revenues that we're, that we're hoping for, but aren't there yet. So, this is what I know you can do.
I think it's just important to remember that even if we don't have funding today, that once the villages is built out, you're talking about 3 to 5 million dollars in recurring ad valorem that is not on this slide.
You're correct. I kept, I kept-
Some of it has to be used there, but not most of it.
Yes. I, and I kept this capital monies. I didn't mix in ad valorem. And that's why I keep going back to the 3.5, because on one hand, like Commissioner Bone, like you're saying, you know, "Hey, this is what we got, and let's make sure we spend it in the right spot," because that's correct. But on the other hand too, I think we still got to move forward, and we're still planning that there's going to be more capital monies. So, the, the, those capital monies are what you don't spend, plus what hopefully by the end of this year, we're going to see. You know, and well, A, we know, we, we're in the process, the, the gas is going to occur. The only thing out there that's holding up the gas deal is TECO, so hopefully, that's settled in the next couple of years. Uh, and number, number two is the, the bulk water deal. That's, that's pretty much done, but the water's not flowing yet. So, these, these are, these are deals that I, I think you can count on, but not quite yet. So, that's why, that's why I come back to it. I want to mention it, but I also want to caution, it's not, it's still, you know, it's still a bird in bush until it's done and the money's flowing. So, onto the, onto the pool conversation. We came up, um, with five concepts, um, on the pool, um, to show you from really six concepts. Do nothing, don't spend any money, continue to manage Dabney as-is, so that's really option number one. But if we go build a pool, the, the options become, we tried to throw six concepts to give you levels of cost and what you can get for your, for your money. So, cost number one is, is again, we go from least expensive to most expensive. I want to also caution too, that in this program, these are just build-a-pool costs. Then, when we get into pick a location, we're also, we have potentially more costs to run into based on where we may put the pool, based on soil conditions and these types of things. So, number one is, let's just refurbish Dabney, for example. What we're trying to do with refurbish is, um, it, uh, get it from, it's a 32-meter pool, you know, would be removable wall, new bathhouse, additional parking shade structures, general rehab, um, night lighting and area lighting. Uh, we put all those things in the hopper. We, we think to get Dabney really functional for the next few years, you're looking at 875,000. On a side note, this bathhouse number, um, on all the facilities, we, we, we repeat this number, uh, because if you, if you build a, any type of aquatic facility, you're going to need the bathhouse, entry, office space, that number, we estimate it at 550,000. So, that number kind of recurs, because it's a, it's a rehab Dabney and a bathhouse, or it's a new, some type of new pool and a bathhouse. So, concept number one, let's just go with Dabney, let's put a little money into it. 875,000 is what we think that that would cost. Number two is, stay at Dabney, or take this pool concept, which is a basic competition pool, that will provide the commission the ability to, uh, have swimming lessons and swim team access, um, and that's it. So, it's a 25-yard pool by 25-yard pool, which is eight lanes, new bathhouse shade structures, and lighting the pool up. That number, 1.7 million. Concept number three is a 50-meter pool, uh, with a 25-yard pool. Uh, 50-meter pool to make it more of a regional attraction, um, so it's, you're talking about two types of pools, kind of diving boards, new bathhouse shade structure, night lighting, and cost, 2.265. Concept number four now gets back to more of a, a lap swim pool and a recreational pool, um, where we have your 25 by 25-yard pool, we throw in some diving boards, um, we put in a slide, we do a beach entry, so you have more recreation, and then shade structures, lighting, bathhouse. Cost on that, 2.6. Concept number five is, is the Cadillac, where you have, uh, the, your, your big pool, you have even more fun, recreational areas, teaching pool, diving boards, multiple slides, beach entry, floating play area, bathhouse shade structures, lighting, and our number on that is about 3.4. I, I, I feel like that number's just a little light, so that worries me a little bit. So, all in all, I think those are your concepts. My suggestion would be that probably concept number four is about where we would need to run up. So, I'm, I'm thinking that, as you saw in my presentations, that $3 million planning number is a good one. So, if you build a pool, where would you put it? Um, I, my recommendation to the commission is that if you do build a new pool, the best place to put it is the Leesburg Recreation Complex at the gym. Think that makes the most sense. We own the property, we know some of the soil conditions, it, it, it keeps all of our recreational leisure things together, and it allows us really to remove the two older pools that we have, Venetian Gardens and Dabney. Think Dabney's good for a little while, but eventually, Dabney is going to need to be closed down. Um, I also think that investing in Dabney heavily is not the greatest in concepts, because you're going to throw, you're going to end up, if you put a million dollars into that pool, in three to five years, you're going to be back putting money into that pool again. So, I, Dabney is not quite as, as bad as Venetian Gardens pool, but it, it is on its way. So, I, I think the best way to wrap this up is have one pool, put it at the gym. Some other considerations are Rogers Park. Rogers Park, uh, down by the splash pad, I think, has some nice options to it, um, but it also has some drawbacks to it. And the other issue, which we haven't talked a whole lot about, is Susan Street. Think if you go to the Susan Street Park, that's a good concept for that as well, because it links in the parks, we have space for it. Four, I didn't have this, I, I added this actually today at 5 o'clock, Commissioner. School board member Bill Mathias contacted me, I think on Friday evening, and, um, when he heard about our discussion, said, "Hey," he would advocate that the, the school board provide us the old Dabney school property, four acres, if we build it there, that the partnership that he would add, now, this isn't a done deal, this is what he would advocate. And if you say, "Hey, we love that concept the best," then that would have to be tagged with, "Go make that happen." But the, his, what he advocated was a, um, if the city build a pool at Dabney, the school board provide us, grant us the four acres in exchange for opening up, this is, it wasn't a bad deal, uh, in exchange for opening up to hosting the swim teams without cost for Leesburg, Eustis, and Taverri's, which I think we can accommodate, if, if that's the location. Having said all those things, I, I think the gym is the best spot for us. We own it, it brings our recreational things together, and, and I think it really accomplishes what we're doing. So, questions? I tried to keep that as brief as possible.
Yeah, I would, I would have some questions on the, um, location cost, because I, you know, obviously, like you said, there's going to be, you know, depending on where you put it, different cost that would be involved, and, you know, one of those is the Rogers Park. I think that's a tight fit, and I know you were working on, looking at some numbers there, but basically, I think the concept there would be to take out the Boys and Girls Club building, and somehow reconfigure and throw it in right there.
Yeah. That would, that, that concept would be, take out the Boys and Girls Club building, take out a couple trees, and move the lift station.
And would that, would, that would close, um, what's that street called, Cove, what's the?
Oh, yeah. No, we can get it in there without closing that down. Yeah. But I think, I think ultimately, what, where the, the downside to that one is, is I think we're going to run into some soil issues. I think we're going to run into some parking issues. I think we're going to run into some operational issues too. I mean, I think if we put it there in Palmar Park, or the edge of Palmar Park, you're not going to get night use out of it. I think, if we put big lights there, and I think we're going to get complaints. That's another reason why, and I think that we fall back to that gym position. But then again, you put it over there, I think what you do is you link back that goal number one, your goal number two, the, the lakefront city concept. Do things that drum up and beat people up with, "Hey, we're the-" up and beat people up with, hey, we're the lakefront city, you put your swimming pool on the lake with all these improvements you made, I think that has some scenarios, too. I think operationally, though, you gotta fall back and go to the recreational one.
Which, which one of these pools are, would all of them work for the school board?
All of them would work for the school board. And let me, and let me put a caveat on that. What I understand through Mr. Mathias is they just need an operational regulation swim pool, which, so they need eight lanes, twenty-five yards. And as long as that's what he meant when he told me Olympic-sized pool, then all of these would work.
So how does the, we, the teen center, because we talked about the location, the teen center being by the gym, what, what are we talking about options?
All those things, if, do we have a picture of that? I think we do, and, and if you, this is one you, Travis, there's, there's some concepts that we did wanna flush out, we didn't put it in the presentation for the purpose of revenue, but the, the gym actually has the size to, to host the teen center. If you can blow that up, and I'll just, let me use this, the, the gym has the potential, this is, so here, this is Griffin Road, here's Carver Meadows, this is, oh, where'd you, where'd you go?
You can go to Al's, Chris.
And so, Griffin, here's the gym, obviously, this way is, is north. Here's the gym, teen center would fit right here. So what we put, the teen center was like-
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand square feet, so that would actually be right here and attached to the gym. The pool is actually scheduled to go down in here, and so I think we put a little more parking in here, we shifted, we made, we can, we gotta make our retention a little bigger, but a swimming pool can fit right in here.
How much is a little more parking, because there's already insufficient parking there for even what we have, so?
Our plan repeats this. So we build that again.
Yeah, 'cause it, I mean, yeah, but even, even with the use of the gym right now, people are, I mean, it's really probably pretty dangerous, 'cause the way people have to park, including myself, when you go to games there, and you're parking up in the grass and the trees, and the circular motion that goes through there, and kids running across the parking lot, it's, uh, not the, not, already not the best setup. So I would question, you, you probably need three times that amount of parking for a teen center and a swimming pool to go in there, not just double, you know, maybe even four times the amount of parking.
Yeah, I don't see both there. I don't have a problem with the location, I have a problem with too much there, because if you have a basketball game and a swim meet at the same time, how's that gonna, how's that gonna work?
What happened, what happened to the, the, there was some, because there was some discussion about some county property up on the other side of Griffin there.
That's-
Is that off the table?
No. We, we tried to keep your options a little bit limited, I mean, we can give you a list of ten sites if you like, and, and they can get totally expanded. That site that you mentioned, it's actually right here, the, the, this cluster of trees right there, that's county property up in here, we can, you know, potentially use some of this, partner with the county.
Now, was there some indication from the county that they would be willing to?
Uh, there was indication from David Heath, the former county manager, four years ago, that the county would consider that. I would still, I, I, I would think that the county would still be open to that type of partnership.
So let me, let me ask you a question, so, 'cause, and I know Commissioner, or Mayor Roebuck probably tried, and probably all the commissioners have tried, I've, I've had several discussions with whether it's Beacon College, Lake Sumter College, the, the, the school board, the county commissioners, and just various people, let, let's all partner together and contribute some money to, to take care of the swimming pool issue. Nobody wants to put up any money, but I hear county's willing to maybe give a piece of property here, school board may be willing to give a piece of property. And, but that then forces us to select one of those locations to do it. If they're willing to participate in donating property, can we approach them and say, would you donate this property to the city, donate this piece of property to the city, allow us to develop it, market it, so that we can take the money then and put the swimming pool where we wanna put it, which may be a different location. It may be at Venetian Gardens, to be able to, you know, justify the cost to put it there, which I think if we're gonna do a pool, that's where you put it, because it goes with everything else that we're doing it, at, you know, for that lakefront, the recreation and everything else, and, but that's gonna be the one that's gonna cost more money probably with the, uh, the soil conditions and lift pumps and that kinda thing.
Yeah, let me, let me address that. In, in my opinion, the partnerships are all over the place, and it depends who we're partnering with. Generally, it's not as advantageous for the city. And so when, when I see, let's partner, I think, okay, they're gonna, they're gonna cough up some cash. Nobody except us has coughed enough cash.
Exactly.
So if we're gonna partner with the county or the school board, I think what you, what that partnership may look like is, we build a pool, we operate the pool, they give us some property, and in exchange, they may dictate the type of pool that you put in. That's why I go back to that recre, that, that option of the recreational pool, that three million dollars, I think if you put three million dollars to a pool, and you partner and use, and the county gives us this, or the school board gives us Dabney, then I think you're still around that three point million dollar number. And, and I think you have a reasonable partnership.
Alone, I don't have a problem with the pool there, I don't have a problem with it particularly at the, at the recreation center, or at the Dabney property, or across the street from Venetian Gardens on the, where the shuffleboard courts are, with any of those, but if I look at what we're doing at Venetian Gardens and the amount that we're, we're investing there, and the, the, what we're creating at Venetian Gardens, and you know, I'm not supportive of how much money we're spending on the community center, but with what we're doing and all the money we're spending, that's where I say, you put the, you, you put the swim, you find a place to put the swimming pool there at Venetian Gardens and somehow make that work, because that's, that's like the, you know, that dotting the eye of, of what you're doing there at, at Venetian Gardens, so.
And you, you mentioned a couple of other locations, you know, Venetian Garden, you mentioned shuffleboard courts, tennis court courts over here across the street, so there's, if, if, if the question is, build a pool, yay, we can, we can talk another six months ago.
Well, for me, when you talk about location, I wanna talk about the economics of it, 'cause you tell me if I can build a pool at this location and go to another location, it'll cost me a million dollars more, and I'm gonna determine, okay, I try to decide, why am I spending a million dollars more when we got other projects that we could be doing because of a location? And, and I get it, if we go to, if we go to Venetian Gardens, I want us to have build a pool that's gonna provide night swimming, gonna be stays at our, and I don't wanna hear no one coming saying, the lights gotta go off at six o'clock. So I think that's very important to me, if we're gonna spend this kinda money on a pool, recreation-wise, I don't think it should've shut down at five o'clock. So when we pick location, I think that's what we also need to make sure that we're careful of, not because it's where we fit a, a six million dollar, whatever, community center, I wanna put it where it's gonna be actively in, in, involved with, with our entire community, not just because I got a swim meet, but if I wanna have something at eight o'clock at night, I wanna be able to do that, because I want a pool that I spent three million dollars on, or three point five, 'cause I'm, I'm still lacking a Cadillac version myself, but I think, uh, I think should be for the, for the entire community, I don't think it should just be for a swim team, shouldn't be just for a particular group, I think it should be for mom and dads who're gonna bring their kids and enjoy the, the activities of the pool. If I'm gonna go three million, let me get three point five million and build something that's gonna make Leesburg a shining star, and not just because we want a pool.
But, but I have to, Commissioner Chris, I have to disagree on spending all that money for a swimming pool, because I don't think you get, you know, to go for a Cadillac, I don't think you get the value out of it. And nobody likes to hear, well, you know, this is what happened in this place or that place or whatever, but I've seen it, you just don't, there's no way you're gonna get the, not only you won't get the money out of it, you're not gonna get the use out of it to, for, you know, for what you, for just what you expect, that the, there's, there won't be a tremendous flood of people to use a swimming pool like this, it becomes an amenity that I think does need to be, have multiple use. I like the idea that the, you know, that if the school board's willing to say, okay, we will have your, our Taverries, Eustace, Umatilla, and Leesburg's, you know, meets in, in Leesburg, that's gonna bring some, bring some traffic in, so I think you do need to have that kind of, that kind of a partnership to have, to increase the use and the, and the traffic of people coming into, into town for these things.
So think about the two point six million on option number four, and the three point four million, switching locations, you're gonna lose that two point six to three point four million, because, because, because right here, at the gym location, you have a parking lot, and we're, and we're, I guess, we just admitted, I guess we don't have enough parking, so I don't know why we have a direct staff that's gonna knock trees down and provide better parking, and we all just said it's dangerous, kids running out, so I don't think why that's not in the budget, gonna knock trees down, expand the parking lot, we got an existing facility that we're saying, just admitted on record, that is dangerous, so I think we should, immediately without doing anything, we should be knocking down trees, 'cause I think we got ten acres, which goes all the way down that, that, that road, I mean, that's-
I agree, I, I think there needs to be more parking out there, so.
And that's, and we kinda didn't get there.
There's, now, now, can I, can I go a step farther when we talk about Susan Street? I mean, 'cause there has been, I know, at least Al, you've had discussions with me, and I'm sure probably with others, about an expanded recreational facility at Susan Street? Can I keep it, can I keep it?
Can I show that to you?
Man, you can open it up.
Shrink that down.
Because that then goes to address one of your other-
Yeah, you know, and I think I'm going down the path that, and somewhere, the city, I was, Griffin Road, here's twenty-seven, here's Susan Street Park, and, and so, the city owns this block here, we own this block here, we own all, this, 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 by the way now is the gym, that does something like this, all the way down. So actually, the gym, all the way back around the Susan Street, linked together. So the overall concept is, you know, if you do put rec center there, or teen center there, you stick pool in here, you open up all of this, and you start working yourself back around into Susan Street Park. Or you do it inverse, put the pool down here. We don't get a whole lot of use of the shuffleboard court, or the, shuffleboard, I'm sorry.
Racquetball.
Racquetball courts here, you can, you can get pool in this area and, and, and work it backwards.
What about that little area you're avoiding, you're going around there?
Yeah, is this where you're talking about?
No, over here.
I'll, I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that. And you can build gateway and make improvement out here into twenty-seven, so you have entry into this whole recreation concept. Now, in the middle of all of this, where I wasn't avoiding, but I was coming back to that, that was the punch, and so that's Beecher Street, you know? The, the concept on there, ultimately, long-term, would be, maybe the city needs to look at capturing all of this and condemning this property, and all of this become a giant park area for the city. About six months ago, I was gung ho on that internally, it popped up, and that, that's a tougher deal to do after I talked with Fred. But I mean, long-term, I mean, if we really, really wanna cock a blight, we wanna make a big statement, we wanna invest and fix community, I think we, we do take a long-term approach at, at fixing this. The one, the one project that I would bring to your, and I don't remember the name of it, but it was up, went on up in Atlanta, where they had the PGA Tour, does, what, what's the name of that? They did PGA, the championship, Eastlake, in, outside Atlanta. They went into a blighted area, they condemned it, they bought it all up, and now it's a ritz-y tits-y huge property. So that, that's the kinda concept, I don't know if you ever get in Eastlake, but, but this, this, all of this can actually all work together.
And, and Fort Myers, they built the Red Sox Stadium right in the, in the-
Yeah, so, oh, by the way, this is the trail, so it'll actually, and, and then down over here, if we come back a little bit more, is-
Yeah, can you scroll down?
You know, I don't, I didn't include Palm-
Yeah, can you keep going, 'cause this is the other thing, Al, that I, that I brought up several times, can you go down a little bit farther, so?
Yeah, this is Palm Plaza, right here, this was the property that Ben wanted to-
Right, so, so Mr. Welling wants to, he's willing to donate that whole piece of property right there behind the, that, that whole area, he's willing to donate to the city of Leesburg, if we will help him to, I don't even think he's made it a condition, but to come in, to be able to come in off of four, of twenty-seven there, to come back into that area.
Now, and on that note, I would, I would just point, I think that's a, that's a, that's a good concept. We're, we're, actually, as we get down here, we're really only linked to the, there's another parcel that's owned by somebody in here, not us, we've got like a little hook that comes down here. And, but, that's a good concept, it can link us all together, the only problem with this concept is, we really can't take this without everything else, because that property's really not that usable. You know, if we're gonna develop it in the summer, if it's weapons, maybe, maybe that becomes store water area for all the development areas and those type of things.
Well, the wooded area is like that, that's an old pond.
Right, but that's up in here, that's not Ben's property, this is Ben's property, this gray, which is, which is wetland kind of property. So I mean, but, but anyway, but the big scale of that is, there's, there's, and go back, Brad, if you can, shrink that down, there's, I just, I think there's opportunity in here for, you know, to, to make a major statement, a major recreational statement right in the center of town. I, I, so I think that, that's, whether you ever get there, but that's a big dream, but I think it's, it's, I think it's more realistic than putting twenty million dollars in Pat Thomas Field.
I mean, all the business sessions that I've gone through, especially one in St. Petersburg, the city's talked about being intentional. Removing blight, improving your city is about being intentional. I think the city commission, we make these major improvements, we have to be intentional on our efforts on improving and removing, improving our city, removing blight. I think this is an intentional move to not only accommodate a new swimming pool, I think that's accommodates the, the goals that, that we've had for many people in our, in our city, but also it, it goes to the effort of, of putting things in a recreation complex. I was just in Sarasota, their sports complex, everything was in one location, baseball, gymnasium, swimming pool, all splash play evolved in one location, so I, for me, I think that's my desire, is to see that we have a sports complex where parents can go, and they can have a family experience all at one, at one time.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Christian, I, I like the, the idea of expanding the, the recreation here, 'cause, you know, with the two anchors, you have, you know, the, the gym, and then all this over here, which is not gonna, neither one of them are gonna go away, but this, this little neighborhood, I've mentioned it several times, is, I, I think this neighborhood right here, to me, is, is an ideally suited neighborhood for re, for redevelopment, for, I don't know, for, for fixing up the homes and going from a rental community to, and I know there's people that own in there, but going, but going from a rental community to ownership, we've got, you know, right here, where's the Dixie, or the, where's the Mac, we're right here, we just, we just spent, did this nice improvement area here, and so if you take what we've done here, and, and you expand this over here, and you've, you've got this, you know, you put a swimming pool over here, you expand these facilities, maybe go work out something with, with Mr. Welling to do this, and you've, you've just really created a pocket here between, you know, I think between twenty-seven and four forty-one, and the, and the recreation facility to create a, a pocket of redevelopment there, and then that helps increase property values, and, and then that could spread over into all, over into Beverly Shores and Carver Heights and, and, and those neighborhoods, so.
Can you work on a feasibility study and see how long and an estimate of how much you're talking about?
Oh, for that whole?
The whole thing?
Yeah, I, we would need some outside consulting help on that, and I think putting together a big thing on that, that, I think that's a year in the making. I don't think we say we don't, we don't not do a swimming pool or the teen center in that area, I think we can do it hand in hand.
Absolutely. But before the pie in the sky gets to be too much, let's see what it's gonna take, and let's see what we're talking about.
I, I would like to see, based on some representation, that you've got a school board member who's willing to put up the Dabney, get, advocate putting the Dabney property up for this, if this, if this, if we can use the pool for school purposes, you've got the county, you know, that's willing to maybe allow us to have that piece of property up there to do it, that there be some sort of common sense and meeting of the minds in, in both of those parties, that, hey, maybe the better place to do it is to put the pool is over here, and we want, you know, in, you know, in this area, or maybe it's over here, or somewhere else, but we do need their help, we're not gonna ask for money, but those properties that they're willing to, to give to us to do it, will you just give them to us, so then we can use them to help fund it somehow? And, and whether that's that the pool ends up here, or ends up at Venetian Gardens or wherever, but to, but to follow up on that, that partnership, and they don't have to give us cash, give us the land, and we'll make cash out of it, so.
Just realize that you're gonna lose control of the scheduling and everything else if you partner with the Board of Education.
But you're gonna, but you're gonna lose it anyway, if we're gonna, if you're, if you're gonna build this, if you're gonna build a Cadillac, or you're gonna build this competition swimming pool here, you're gonna lose that anyway, because you have to have the meets come in.
But do you wanna do this for the citizens of Leesburg, or Taverries, or Umatilla, or Eustace? I, I think we have to keep in mind that the town deserves some of this.
Well, back here, but, yeah, well, obvi, absolutely, but back here, you've got, you've got football facilities, and you've got people coming from, where do they come from, Mr. Hayward, they come from all over Central Florida to come into here, we want them to come in, you know, people to come here, we- We want them to come in, you know, people to come here, we want people from Taverri's and Eustis and Mountain Dora to come into Leesburg, and so-
I agree with that, just so that all the time in these facilities is not given away, that's all.
Well, that's part of what we'd have to figure out, that partnership and how to allocate that.
Right, that's why I'd like to see-
We've got a college that we, you know, I think, you know, Lake Sumter, we want them, you know, we want to, I think, work with them, and for them to be as active and involved and grow their campus in Leesburg as possible. And you've got Beacon College growing, I think there are some, you know, the hospitals as well, so I think there's some partners there that, you know, that we do need to take into consideration to help make their schools, their hospitals more attractive to the people, their students and doctors and nurses that they're trying to attract. That's where you get the value out of spending $3 million or $4 million to build a swimming pool, because it's not going to be on the people paying a dollar a day to come swim in the swimming pool, or-
Two dollars.
Two dollars a day to come swim in the swimming pool, or, you know, to have a meet here and there. You're not going to get that money, you get it from that, adding that amenity to those other partners.
I mean, I like the gym and Susan Street concept since they're centrally located. I don't see, even if we wanted to pay for the site work at Venetian Gardens, I don't see a solution for the parking, that's my biggest concern there. So if we can't come up with a parking, then, I mean, that, for me, that's how we would have to fix that.
You'd have to build that tunnel and put the parking over in a-
The tunnel's going to the pool.
At $3 million.
Right, and then now, yeah, so, and an ADA tunnel, so probably $8 million. This is for parking, so, yeah, so, and then in terms of the concepts, I personally, for me, a pool, it's, number one, it's so we can teach kids to swim, in Lake County, it's very important. And if we're going to have that, then I think it needs to work for at least some sort of swim meets. So I personally like up concepts two, and then possibly three. I'm not on the Cadillac train, I think that's a little much, more than we need, but that's-
Mayor, I mean, if I could say, if we're going to do, if these prices are somewhat in the ballpark, I mean, if we're going to do three, if we were to do three at two, and I say this based on getting these partners and getting some property to help fund this, but if we're going to do three, you've got the cost of that at, what, 2.2? And then you've got four with the dive pool in there, which I assume, do the high schools, and do they do dive competition?
You've got diving on three as well.
Oh, you do have the dive on three?
Three is like the competition pool, that, from, at least my limited understanding of talking to people-
What's the difference, but why is this?
It's got the 50 yard.
Yeah, I-
Or something.
Explain that to me, because I'm not a swimmer, so this, number five shows a-
Three, the 50 meter pool is the Olympic size. The super trainers, when they run the Olympics and you see Michael Phelps, they swim 50 yard pools. It's a training, a competition thing, because they want to go longer distances, they swim longer, and they don't, they don't want to go back and forth. I don't think your 50 meter pool is really necessary to be an attraction.
Figure that next one.
But I would take that option, money-
What is this right here?
That's a 25 yard, that's a 25 yard pool with a recreational facility in it.
Now, is that a deeper diving thing than that?
This would be-
Than number three?
This square is diving well, okay? This is your lap pool, so this is like six to eight feet deep, a square bottom. This is your diving well, so down to 12 feet deep. And then this would be your zero entry into six feet in here.
Right, but this is not in number three?
No.
Right, actually, it's a swimming pool over the top.
Oh, that's-
So the difference between three and four is, you also got the play structure on four?
Yeah, the difference between three and four is, this brings in more of a recreational component for another 400 grand. Or, you know, here's, I think, or you take this number, go back to the other component, number three, and you marry these two. You know, we put this in here because it's talked about, I don't think this is a good option. Because then you're putting money into 50 meters, and you're never going to use it. And I'll provide an example. The North Indian River County Pool, which was located in Sebastian, Florida, they had a 50 meter pool and a recreational component. And they brought in a ton of people, and everybody talks about the Sebastian Pool, and they loved it. But, when they had swim meets and they brought in events, they never used the 50 meters. They always did, and these pools are sized that, this is 50 meters, and this is 25 yards. So you'll never see these big high school or leagues, and you don't start using that 50 meters until, you know, you're in college and you're going out, or Fort Lauderdale, swimming, looking for things. So, but I think with that kind of coin versus the other coin, you can come up now with a concept in that two and a half million dollars, that gets you a little bit of recreation and gets you your 25 by 25 pool.
So, on option four, is that the size of a swim meet as well on the bottom?
Yeah, so your swim meet, your swim meets here, you're eight by 25, okay? So, you're going to be teaching swimming lessons for like intermediate folks over here. You're going to be teaching your toddlers over here on the beach side, kids who don't know how to swim, and babies and infants, you know, kind of slowly, incrementally moving them into the big pool. And so, scheduling would look like, in the morning, you're going to have your swim lessons, and the whole pool's going to be used, because you're going to have three or four or five different classes going on at once. You're going to have your infants up here, you're going to have your intermediate guys down here, and you probably have your diving pool closed. And then, by noon, then your recreational swim. And then, in your mornings, on your Saturdays and Sundays, you're going to have your events. And then in the winter, when recreational swim starts going away, you're going to bring in, okay, let Eustis, let Taverri's, let them come in, let them swim laps. So that concept works, I think it's a reasonable exchange, if you go to the Dabney side out there, you build this pool, you put it at Dabney, and the only hook that you're into it is you got to etch out a time to get three high schools to use of it, that's a reasonable deal for that value of property. You can, and then you still have a regional draw. So I think this concept at this price on the property, if you're going to go pool, that's what I would be recommending.
Yeah, I think that's the one I, that I like.
Looks like the biggest bet.
I'm in a Hyundai now, so we don't-
This isn't quite Hyundai, you know, this is kind of a Buick plan. It's not Cadillac, it's not Hyundai.
But I know I've said this, but I, you know, I've been, I'm not the biggest supporter of spending the money on a swimming pool, but I've said that if it has, if we get more bang for the buck out of it, then it serves a bigger purpose than just having people to be able to go have a place to swim. And so for me, I really would like to look at putting it, to expanding the Susan Street recreational complex area, looking and see what we can do to take out a blighted area at the same time as doing that. And when you step back and you look at the big picture of that, you know, like the bicycles and those bicycle trails, well, that bicycle trail runs right behind there, and would run right along, and it comes and crosses over 27. If you can get the Bennett-Walling property involved in that as well, and you bring, and you go over 27 into downtown Leesburg now, and you take that trail into downtown, and you do some shared roads over to Venetian Gardens and Palmore Park, you've connected, you know, a whole, Venetian Gardens over to this through bicycles and recreation, and you've really, I think you create a real nice, attractive recreational identity.
And with the additional use back there, you've also taken care of one of the issues of the homeless.
Yes.
You know, I like two and three really, just because they're cheaper, but if you can, I guess, I really do like the idea of telling the school board, give us this Dabney property, which is not worth anything to them, they've been trying to sell it for like, what, 10 years?
They gave this one away for $200,000 over here.
Yeah, so if they could just give us that property, and I think it's, we could do something good with that property.
Negotiate them.
You know, there's, and I don't, Tom Frost, the second time his name came up tonight, but he's also thrown out that Lee School concept, and maybe that's even a location. Now, that's still not owned by Mr. Frost, it's still owned by the Binge Group. But that's, and that's why we didn't throw all these concepts in there, because we can talk about concepts and-
Well, that'd be nice too, but I, you know, I think, you know, the Susans, for me, that Susan Street, taking out a blighted area, taking, you know, connecting that up, creating another entryway into the park through the Walling property there, to figure out those pieces, I think you've created a major recreational piece. You've got good pieces to it right now, and you've just, you know, I think it can't help but increase property values around there and be attractive to-
So, no, we've got a lot of people that have been having to listen to us for a while, so maybe we let them come up and have some comments, and then we can keep going. So if you like, if you could, when you come up, if you just state your name, so we have it for the record, and then just try to keep your comments to around three minutes.
Yeah, John Dabney. Recreation pools are all well and good, but you make your money, Commissioner, I would think, in using our own property that you're talking about, City Manager, at the recreation place. And then you lease it out to different schools, different teams for practice, and having different events. As far as, to me personally, either that concept four or three. With the 50 yard pool, you do run into the thing of who swims 50 yards, emotionally, you find that in competition in colleges. Most of your high schools can work out a 25 yard pool, which is what we had at Venetian Gardens all of these years. I don't know whether Leesburg High School even still has a swim team, I'm not really sure. But there are teams, and then you got traveling teams, just like your other sports. Whatever you do with that softball complex, that sleepy hollow, if you build a decent aquatic center here, you can do the same thing. You have property at the recreation, as long as the land is there, to put a pool on, that's where we should go, in my opinion. I worked with aquatics in this area for the city for over 25 years. I worked at that Dabney pool, grew up in that pool. And I'm glad to see it's still there now to take care of the citizens. We can have that recreation element, but at the same time, if we're going to have a pool that's going to generate funds, which it can do, then you lease it out to different teams. And that's the way you do it. The Dabney property over there, as far as I'm concerned, you'll get tied in, and you'll have schools from all over the county wanting to come over here, because you made a deal with the county. Let's keep this for us. You have the property, so use it, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Good evening, see you anymore. I just want to first thank you all for having this discussion. I know there's been a lot of people that are anxious to get this settled. I just want a couple clarification things. One, I think that we do not need a 50 meter pool. 50 meters really is actually just the Olympics, even colleges compete 25 yards. So, there's really not, I mean, there is competitions that are 50 meters over the summer, the season is 50 meters, so people go to 50 meter pools, but really, I just don't think that it's needed. I think that we can really accomplish what we want with having the 25 yard pools. I think, the other thing I would like to, maybe see if you can get clarification on with the school board, because it's my understanding that they don't necessarily need to train at our pool all the time. The other cities, Taverri's and Eustis, they have pools that they can train in. It might just be that they need to compete. Because the reason why we can't have swim meets at our pool right now is because you have to do a push start at the pool that's going to be torn down, so you have to push off the wall. So they would like to have a pool that you can compete in, that you can actually dive off the blocks. So I would assume that they probably don't want to drive all the way to Leesburg to practice, because there are pools in both of those areas, that they probably are just looking to use them for competitions. That's, I don't know that for sure, but I know that, I did talk to one of the, to Mr. Mathias, and that was the understanding I got from that. And then, other than that, I just, I just really, I love concept four personally. I love the idea of, I do like the idea of the recreational complex, but I also really like the idea of having it in Dabney. And so either one of those would be wonderful, but that's just my two cents.
Good evening. Mr. Mina and all the commissioners, I'm happy and I appreciate you letting me have this opportunity to speak just a few seconds on this idea of the pool, Dabney Pool in the Carver Heights area. Although the pool belongs to the city, it is most important that that Dabney pool will serve the community in which it is located. The pool has been an icon for over 50 some years, being the center of summer activities for most of the children in the Carver Heights area. We must remember that the pool is named in memory of Mr. H.O. Dabney, and that he was a teacher, changed hundreds of lives in that pool by teaching children and adults to swim with water safety, self-respect, and decent living. This is part of what Leesburg's history is all about, which we want and would love, and we need to preserve until the very last. Because of these reasons, it is worthy discussing how we might revive the importance of the pool, excuse me, rather than casting it or chasing it out or closing. Here are two suggestions. It is important for people who manage the pool, the lifeguards and whatnot, come from the community. Because this has changed, a different message has been sent, which says the pool is no longer the cornerstone of summer fun. This could be fixed by training the guards and other people that help with the pools who live in that area. One, the entrance fee, one entrance fee could be reduced. You know, that is, a bit, $2, I think it is, is a bit expensive for low-income families, and especially a parent that had maybe two or three children who would like to go swimming every day. We also know that reducing that price would help. And the other change would be to do something, or have someone, or some people in that area be trained and have the opportunity to serve at that pool. The entrance fee could be reduced, as I've mentioned, and also, those are two main things I think I'd like to call your attention to. It would make a huge difference. And I'm sure that you can think of some other things that might be a turn, be happen, and could happen in return to pool, to be in a safe and exciting place for all of the citizens of Leesburg. Now you, please consider and reconsider what I've attempted to say here this evening. That is one particular location that is still an uphold, an uplifting thing, in a sense, to the neighborhood or that area. Please, let's help, see if we can build it up and make it more effective, it's time to come. Thank you.
Some more comments?
Hi, my name is Don Parsons, I live in Palmore Park. I'm gonna take a little different tack on this. That pool has been in Venetian Gardens forever. My kids, my daughter's kids have all enjoyed that pool there. It is at a very central place. If you move it across Dab-, over to the Dabney area, the kids over in this area are not going to go over there, and you know that. I'm totally against moving that pool over there. I want it to stay in Leesburg, either at Venetian Gardens or the school property or somewhere in that area. I don't believe that it's a good move to move it to, over to the Dabney area.
Yes, my name is Randy Eppburn, born and raised here in Leesburg all my life. I can remember being a kid 50 years ago and couldn't get in Venetian Gardens pool. I couldn't go because I was a black kid, wasn't allowed to get, I heard it coming. I wasn't allowed to get in that swimming pool over at Venetian Gardens, being a black kid. I can look at, sit and stand at the fence, but I couldn't get in the water, just because the color of my skin. So, I know what all this stuff is about, is our community and our neighborhood. That's the reason we don't want the pool to go where it is. Just quit fooling yourself and be truthful. God wants a man to tell the truth. Tell the truth and shame the devil. That's what a man's supposed to do. And I'm telling you, I know why they don't want it over there, because I've experienced it. I've experienced it all my life. I couldn't get in the water over at Venetian Gardens. H.O. Dabney taught me how to swim. We used to have to get on a school, on an Orange Grove bus. He used to go through the neighborhood and pick all the black kids up, to take us right to the Carver Middle School. I mean, to, to, to that school. I was born and raised there. A lot of these people just, just came in here. This is where I live. I've experienced it. I know firsthand what happened here. We got on the bus, he took us from Pine Street to Carver Heights Pool every day to teach us how to swim. And, and I could walk. I tell you where I lived, I lived on Pine Street. I was able to walk. My mama didn't want me going to the pool. If I got over there, the police would run me from over there. Hey, boy, what you doing around here? We had to leave. We had to leave, so what we ought to do is be sensible about this thing. We got a police department. If you so fearful of your children going in the Carver Heights area, I see police cars posted up over here on, behind the CDC, Commissioner, what's the name of that?
Canal.
Canal Street, two or three police cars sitting there every day. There's no trouble over there. Put 'em where the trouble is. We pay taxes here. Put the police over there around the pool. That aside of problems, if you so fearful of your kids coming in our neighborhood, I just want to thank you. But I like to tell the truth and shame the devil. That's what God wants me to do.
Amen.
Hello, I'm Dr. Nick Pirstowski. This is my fifth time in front of the City Commission. I would like to go ahead now informally, and for everybody out here, and for everybody that can get on social media and throw the challenge out there from the word "go." USA Swimming throws wonderful courses every year. They oversee United States Swimming, they oversee the Olympics. They know everything about everything, as they claim, when you go through that one-day course on what's happening with municipal swimming pools in this country at all times. They know it works, they know it doesn't work. In December of 2012, I put myself in New Orleans at my own expense, spent a day, walked in, knowing a little bit about swimming pools, walked out knowing an awful lot about swimming pools, and had the ability to contact them out there in Colorado Springs, where the USA Swimming headquarters is, along with the Olympics. Couple of things that they go ahead and say, couple of things I brought up five years ago, couple of things that are sitting on social media under "Leesburg Needs a New Swimming Pool" on Facebook. Throw out the idea of a 50-meter pool, throw out the idea of your Cadillac pool, throw out the idea of using this pool for rehabilitation for older people. The Arthritis Foundation mandates it be at least 82 to 84 degrees in temperature. That's too hot, that's too expensive. Cover your pool at night, which the city has not been doing. We lose 40% of our heat, and therefore, they wouldn't heat it, because they said it costs too much, but they wouldn't put the cover on it. That's what started this whole thing years ago. When you jump into the pool, you will jump in, according to the Florida High School Athletic Association, into a minimum five-foot depth, USA Swimming, six-and-a-half feet depth, out for approximately 13 to 16 feet, and then the pool depth is only four feet. If you have a six-foot pool all the way around, you're gonna have kids drowning. Four-foot depth after they do that initial jump in, okay? 25 yards works beautifully. You do not want to put a cover, any type of building over it, because of the other chemicals that'll build up in the air. They claim, five-and-a-half years ago, kill the idea of a diving board. The reason is, is because when you go ahead and take a look at your insurance premiums, that's gonna hit you in the head real hard, because that's where most of these injuries occur, when kids jump off these areas incorrectly and get hurt, okay? So, that's some, something to consider. The last time I was here was a few months back, when the idea first came up to kill the swimming pool. Most of the swim team was in the back of the room. Afterwards, and as I walked out, I had approximately four members of the African-American community come over and say, "Nice presentation, we want to ask you two favors." And I said, "What's that?" "Please ask to name this pool after a historically black educator," and they mentioned H.O. Dabney. The second thing was, as I've heard from 23 years of practice in this town, and working on people with all sorts of diseases, is make it so that people can walk to it. I mean, we have a beautiful sleepy hollow out there. How many kids are gonna go walking through, out in that direction, to get to Sleepy Hollow without getting hit by a car or getting lost? Get it so they can walk down there, okay? Another thing that they went ahead and mentioned, and remember, please, that they said, as you can imagine, "We watch over every pool in the nation. If it is set up properly, properly with an aquatics director, you will make money from the very first day you open up that pool." Taveries, Mount Dora, most of them swim over at the YMCA. They don't want to come all the way over here. They're not gonna come all the way over here. They may come over here to use a meet. My child used to be on the swim team here. I started asking around several years ago, on a weekend, when a school puts on, when a swim team puts on a program for competition, Friday night, Saturday, and somewhat Sunday morning, as Mr. Minna was saying, you may not know the numbers, $15,000 to $25,000. Now, a swim team doesn't need that much money, so if the city says, "Look, we'll let you keep one quarter of that, we'll take three quarters," this pool is making some serious money, okay? You have a lot of different things you can do with this pool. It can work out there at the YMCA, opens up at 5:30 in the morning for adults to go ahead and swim their laps, closes though, closes though before nine o'clock at night. It does not stay open late, because there's no reason to be out there late, and it is lifeguarded, and it is heated, but it is, it is kept uncovered for most of that day. I'd like to throw out a location, because I sat on the corner of Pine and Child Street for years, and I had a chance to watch some blight. I would like to see this pool go on that unused land for lord knows how many years on Pine Street. Three acres of land that's sitting there, owned by, I believe, still, and you can correct me if I'm wrong there, Mr. Christian, the Community Development Corporation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have got three acres of land, you have more than enough parking, you have more than enough room. 70% of our African-Americans in this nation cannot swim. They cannot swim. I'm not sure today what the percentage of African-Americans in Leesburg is, but if you have 70% that cannot swim, they don't go near water, and it's important to go ahead and train people how to swim.
Are you recommending African-Americans getting free?
Pardon me?
Are you recommending African-Americans getting this swimming pool free?
John, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, because now...
Statistic, I'm just wondering if you'd try to propose, make a proposal.
Make a proposal for what?
I'm just wondering, you was talking about African-Americans can't swim, 70%, and you direct the CDC owning property. I'm against the chairman of the board, I'm not the board, so I'm thinking the city wants to buy the CDC's property.
Sure, put it out there as a proposal.
But there's a lot of vacant land throughout Leesburg.
We had a chance to go out and hear Cadillacs, we had a chance to go out and hear 50-meter pools, nobody, you know, Ms. Moore was right, nobody's swimming 50-meter pools, except the Olympics or the Olympic trials. Here's something from Murtha Pools, and then I'm all finished. Murtha Pools is the largest pool maker, manufacturer, and installer in the United States of America. They're based in Italy. Got this today, called up the fellow last week. Attached is a drawing for a similar proposal in Jacksonville, Florida. Theirs is 75 feet long by 82 feet wide, so a little bit bigger than a Leesburg pool you're proposing, but you'll get the idea. Without getting into details of what type of finishes, they put in stainless steel pools with an epoxy PVC covering. They will put 25-year warranty on that pool. They'll fix it for free, 25 years. I'm confident that we can fit into the ballpark price of $1.1 million to $1.2 million for a 75-foot by 75-foot competition pool at six feet deep. This includes all of Murtha's materials, plumbing, mechanical, labor, install. Basically, turnkey encompasses everything necessary to get the pool up and running. This does not account for your engineering, outside concrete for pool decks, buildings, timing equipment, bathrooms, et cetera. Strictly components for outdoor use. The numbers there are a bit off, $3 million for that, for that 25-yard pool.
No, we're not, we're not off. That's option number two, okay? We said 1.7.
Okay.
You say 1.2. So, I'm gonna say that's pretty good estimating.
It is a very good estimate.
You're advocating, and I got the bath house, too, in there.
It is, that's a very good estimate.
So, our numbers almost match, almost identical. It's crazy, wow.
Mr. Minna, this is not the first, second, or third time I've stood before you. I'm right in town here. If you would like to go ahead, I would ask you, fly out to the very next USA Swim team, educate yourselves up, so we don't spend six years, 10 years. Jim Miller, back in the early 2000s, was putting out proposals for pools. That's 18 years ago.
Our numbers are about the same, that's the point.
Very good.
And you were trying to say the opposite, so I just wanted to make it clear.
I'm not saying the opposite, but as this gentleman said, you have to speak truth, and I'm going ahead and telling you that we have been out there, now that the pool is closing in the height of, in the height of summer, that before we talk about putting it where people can't get to, that the public has the right to weigh in on what our opinion is. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments from the public? You want more?
Hi, my name is Tammy Heinman. I'm a third-generation Leesburg resident. Obviously, used the Venetian Gardens and Dabney Pool all my life. We have morning workouts at Dabney, afternoon workouts at Venetian Gardens. I would like to, I don't care which pool you build, as long as it works for competitions and for swim teams, but if you're considering competition, you need to include a warm-up and a warm-down area. You need to consider the lights on at night, on Friday nights, so if you're over at the basketball court area, and you're talking about redeveloping that neighborhood, you might just want to make sure they know that with their redevelopment money, they're gonna have to put up with some of that, you know? Maybe they'll love it, maybe they won't, I'm not sure, but that's something to consider. I personally think that it would be really cool to put it at H.O. Dabney Elementary site and name it after Mr. Coach Dabney. He coached me in high school, I loved him, he's great. He, you know, he meant a lot to all of us. So, to name it after him at the Dabney Elementary site would be really special, in my opinion. That would also tie in with the Venetian Gardens improvements. I don't think with that amount of land, that having lights on or some noise on weekends would bother anybody in the area, since there's four acres, but you'd have to ask around, I suppose. But I just wanted to mention that with the competition scenario, a lot of times, the swim teams have to work out at 5:00, 6:00 a.m., because there's lessons that start at 7:00. Wouldn't it be great if you had the diving well or, or a little side area where some lessons could be going on, along with the team being able to swim, you know, so they're, they're not, you know, having to get up in the dark and ride the bike to the pool, which I've done for 20 years before. So, that's just my input. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Sastarsik, and I was born and raised in Leesburg. I was, I had swimming lessons at Venetian Gardens. I was a lifeguard at Venetian Gardens and at Dabney Pool for six years. I managed both, part of the time I was going through college, so I have experience at both. I was on the swim team. So, what I'm telling you this is, I'm engaged, and I think it's great that I'm now finally hearing that we are going to do something and go forward with getting a competition pool. I agree with what Tammy was just saying. Also, from the swim lessons portion, since I gave swim lessons, the way that Venetian Gardens is set up makes it much easier to give swim lessons to different levels, having a diving area, having a little bit shallower area. So, again, I like four, but I think it needs, could be kind of morphed a little bit to fit a little bit better towards what we could use it for, to kind of fulfill some of those different areas. Because at different times, giving lessons to different ages and levels, different heights are important. All three of my boys have taken swimming lessons at Venetian Gardens. Two of my boys just finished the lifeguarding class, that is for the junior lifeguarding, and I hope that they will become lifeguards once they turn 15 down the line. So, I really do hope that this goes through. Since I've worked both pools and also experienced taking my kids, I will stress that Venetian Gardens is, is heavier used than Dabney Pool is used. And so, that's why I still feel that somewhere towards this direction, I love the H.O. Dabney idea, I love putting it on that site, I went to school there, that's tying the community together. I watched kids of all races ride their bikes to Venetian Gardens and swim together, while I did my swim lessons and while I worked there over the years. So, I feel like that's still bringing that in, and it's still connecting to our new vision of trying to open those areas. But I am very thankful that I am hearing here tonight that y'all want to, to put a complex somewhere, so thank you very much for that.
Any more comments?
Hello, big one, sir.
Yes, sir.
My name's Ron McCarthy, and I grew up in Leesburg. I think I came here at four years old, and we always went to bury, I mean, Dabney Pool, basically. And I think it's good for the community, the little kids, too, because they gotta learn how to swim. And I know they have competitions out there, they usually have water shows, which was really good for the whole community, because everybody came together. But I think it would be a big waste of land and space to get rid of that. I think if it got any serious problem, it could be fixed for a lot less money, but I think it's really a good area. There's nobody got drowned that I know of, over all these years, and I was here and I was away. But that is very, it's a very good pool. Mr. Dabney, he probably don't remember me, but he taught me how to swim. That's his son. So, I say for the community and the little kids that are growing up, and I think they have classes out there for meets or whatever, that's good, too. But I think the little kids are very important, to be taught how to swim, and have somebody to look over them. Like, again, I say, know how to swim, know my time, and thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. Back to the, obviously, we're not deciding anything, voting on tonight, because this was just a discussion, but it, I think it does sound like we're moving forward in the direction of the complex somewhere.
Can I just add, Mayor, I think that, you know, listening to the, particularly the one comment about the, you know, going back to the 1.2 and the 1.7, I mean, I, you know, maybe that number two, maybe an option two, so I don't, I don't want to, you know, say I'm totally for four, maybe we need to look at that a little closer there.
You know, I, I think you do need some, we need some direction as far as how we tackle the pool question. I think there's a couple of things that we don't need to address tonight. If we build a new pool, the, I think there's three primary questions. How much do we want to spend? Where do we want to put it? And if we build a new pool, does the Dabney Pool need to close? Let me, and let me go in reverse order. My recommendation to the commission is, depending on where you pick to put the pool, eventually the Dabney Pool does need to close. If we invest whatever, zero to a couple of million or $7 million, you know, whatever the number is, we invest a penny in a new pool, at some time, the Dabney Pool does need to close down, because we're gonna be...
But you're looking at years down the road.
It could, well, like, like I said, if you put it at the gym, or you put it at Griffin, or something like that, then I think you close down Dabney immediately. If you put it at Pine, you put it where... If you put it at Pine, you put it wherever, then eventually the Dabney Pool does need to close, because there's no sense to have two pools, and Dabney is gonna turn into an operational issue. Second, I think what we...to figure out if you have...if we're gonna move forward with the pool, you give us the parameters of what you're willing to spend this evening. If that number, if you're gonna go with just the operations of a 25-by-25-yard pool that does...that is multifunctional, and you can have laps, you can have swim practice, you can do teaching, these type of pools. And if you do that, then you're looking at a budget parameter of around 1.7.
But now, I think I can address that real quick, because I think before I can say that, I need to know what kind of partnerships can we create, and what are the restrictions gonna be in that? So back to the school board, the county, and those other properties and so forth. I don't think I can say, "This is the pool tonight," because I need to know...and I don't wanna say, "This is a number," because if I say, "This is a number," then I'm telling the school board, "Well, I don't need your property," because, you know, I'd rather hash that out a little bit more on that partnership side. And it goes to the location too, because I'm not a full-pool proponent to have a swimming pool. I like the extra benefits that you get by having it, and I think that putting it somewhere where it's all by itself, whether it's on Pine Street, or whether it's at the Dabney property by itself, I don't think that's...I think you get more of a creation of a recreational identity to your city if you put it where the recreational facilities are, whether that's Venetian Gardens or at the Susan Street where the recreational complex is.
I think there's support on the commission for that.
Yeah.
I don't think you heard any support for the Dabney site here.
Yeah.
The Dabney...
For the Dabney school.
There is not support for the Dabney school.
I'd rather be at a recreational location.
There's support for them to give us that property.
Okay, I'm...
Put it in a use...put it in a use the pool.
And then they can use the pool, yeah, for the schools.
There is support for that concept.
To give us the property so we can sell it, and do something else with it, and then they can use the pool. But why do they care if we put it there versus somewhere else if they get to use it?
Okay.
Because they in result...schools will use the pool, so it doesn't matter where it's at.
I got you.
Yeah, so I think on the location...
I like the recreation complex, and I just wanna say, Mayor, I know we got some more people ready to speak, but, you know, I grew up in Leesburg, I lived 807 McCormick Street, so I walked to the HO Dabney Pool to learn how to swim. So many summers at both pools. I was a volunteer at 15 at Venetian Gardens. At that time, the city had a youth program, so I was a volunteer at 15, helping kids learn crafts, and we called it Boys and Girls Club. I'm just gonna say, watching Facebook, listening to some comments, I promise you, I'm not gonna vote on a pool that's gonna keep our city divided. 43,000 people used the gymnasium this year alone, 8,000 used our swimming pools. So if someone says, "Kids can't get to it," those numbers don't add up for me. So we can sit here and make all these illusions, but I wanna be in charge of my district two seat, to say, "I'm gonna do whatever I can to bring our city together," where we're not saying, "One neighborhood, this neighborhood." This is a city complex, and we should be building facilities that bring our cities together. If you don't go to Carver Heights, you need to go to Carver Heights. If you didn't go to Venetian Gardens, you need to go...you need to visit and get to know your neighbors, because we're a city that's inclusive, not divided. So my vote's gonna always be what's gonna be economically best and taxpayers' interest, which is in a neighborhood that's recreational, parking lots already there, you got 10x land that you can grow, connect to Susan Street, whether you put it at Susan Street or the gym, I think connect recreational activities. So to say someone's not gonna go to the gym or to the swimming pool, I say, "They don't wanna go," too bad. We're building a complex for all Leesburg residents. So my vote's gonna always do what's best for taxpayers, not what's best for who wants to do it, because it's in my neighborhood. So that's my...I mean, economically, you can't tell me going on a blank sheet of paper, land with no parking lot and infrastructure, it's gonna be economically feasible than on a gymnasium or Susan Street, where parking facilities, infrastructure is already in place. So I...to me, I mean, we can't come one way and say, "Let's cut costs," then the next day, "Don't worry about costs, put it where I wanna put it." I think when we make decisions, we've always...commissioner, we've always did what's economically best and sound for the city. And I think we should stop, because 50 people show up to a meeting. The gymnasium project, I'm just gonna say this, we played around with locations. That project got kicked down the road one and two, three years, because we couldn't pick a location. So I wanna say to all the pool components, trust me, pick a location, tell your commission to get to work. All this back and forth, we'll be here next year, because we've already talked about this location a year ago. We already had this discussion right in this room. We had people come, they talked about where they learned how to swim, we had all the history lessons, we had that last year, but we couldn't finalize the location. Here we go again. As you're asking, we're not voting tonight. You're gonna come back six months later, you're gonna get on Facebook. Someone said on Facebook, they said, "Why don't Leesburg take care of their kids? Find me another city in Lake County that has more recreational programs, more recreational parks than Leesburg." You won't find another city in Lake County that has a $3 million gymnasium, has about four or five community neighborhood parks, three major sports complex for baseball. But people get on Facebook and they say this crazy stuff, because they don't know their city. Get to know your city and realize that what's happening in Leesburg is not happening anywhere else, especially for children. At least since I've been on this commission, Leesburg's always been children-dominated. So this project should not be about race, should not be about color, it should be about what's in the best interest of Leesburg. And economically, we should look at what makes the best economical sense for this location. Mr. Mayor, I have to say on that one, since we're not voting tonight. But you know what my vote is?
I know.
So if y'all miss it, ask what my vote is.
When are you gonna vote?
Well, it has to be...we have to direct staff to come back with a formal proposal with actual costs and a contract.
Is it gonna be five years? Is it gonna be six months that you're gonna vote? I mean...
It's up to the mayor.
We're working through our budget. We're gonna try to do something in our budget here.
And I know you didn't wanna have a number, and I respect that, but I think you need a number, you need to give clear directions to staff to say, "Yeah, we're gonna build a swimming pool." You need to make an allocation from the cash that we have, you need to put it in a pot, and then that means it's gonna get built. I mean, and you could...let me back up. You need to have an allocation, you need to put the money aside, you need to instruct staff to start working on it. Now, from there on...now, from there on, that doesn't mean it's gonna get built, but that means we're working towards it, because that's where we're gonna have to come back with design schemes, we gotta tighten up the number, we gotta find a location. So, but you gotta give clear direction to the community.
If we do it at Susan Street, I like number four, minus whatever we don't need to have, because it's not conducive to whatever the swimming regulations are.
Yeah, I'm with you there. And the diving, I think, is important to look into, the insurance.
Right, but I like the idea, if it's at the recreation complex, that you have this multifaceted, you know, waiting area or whatever for the kids, and the slide and that kind of thing.
And if that's a motion, and if there's a second...
If it's at Susan Street.
So if the motion is to...and I would recommend, I think number four was 2.6 million or something? I would say allocate up to the 2.68 million dollars to investigate construction of a swimming pool at the Susan Street area. Can I say "area?" Because that's a little broader. And then if that motion passes, what we'll do is, we'll start our work to start researching and bring back design schematics, and then we'll go step by step, just like we've done on every other project.
Can I add to that as well? And I know these are side pieces, but I do like the whole idea of the whole picture there, that we look at the birch wood involved with that, and the walling on those two sides of it, at least in discussion and contemplating what we can accomplish there in this, so...
And I think I'd like to see a potential site for a teen center as well, as part of the master plan. Yeah, and I just wanna clarify, when I say we're not voting, I mean, we're not like voting to go start digging dirt to build a pool tomorrow, because we literally can't do that without putting out for procurement and going further. We're talking about moving in a direction, so...
But are you going to build a pool?
Don't know yet. I mean, it was...
No, once you get the place and all of the engineering and all of that, are you going to vote to build a pool?
You're gonna have to come up to the microphone and say your name, and we have a few more people that wanna add some public comment, so okay, if we go ahead and let's have some public comment.
Hi, I'm Lynda Tucker. I've been here since I was seven. I've taken lessons at Venetian Gardens, my children have. My daughter's been a lifeguard, my son did the junior lifeguarding thing. Since I've lived here, you've had two pools in this town, and you have grown to the outskirts and beyond to totally shut down two pools and come to one. Really? I like the idea, yes, of it tying in the gym in Susan Street, but to totally shut down and go to one pool for the size of this area, really? I mean, come on. How are kids that live on Sleepy Hollow, you're gonna put your kid on a bus by themselves to go all the way to Carver to get swim lessons? I mean, come on. You have a pool...the high school hasn't been able to have swim meets throughout my daughter's, I think, entire high school years. She's in college and grad school now. Swim lessons are important. The Dabney thing, to have an aquatic center on that side that you can have swim meets, yes. Option number one, to redo and bring Dabney back up to what it should be, yes, you need that at the Dabney Pool. But you need two pools, if not more, in the size of this town. And yes, when are you going to build? Because, look, we're bulldozing in the middle of summer, swim lessons and everything else, and you're just going down to the Dabney-sized pool. Is that really fair to everybody, that y'all didn't address this before deciding to bulldoze Venetian Gardens? That's why everybody's here.
Well, I'll just say, all along, I was like, "We can't do community center without deciding what we're gonna do with the swimming pool first."
I mean, we live around lakes. Not everybody can afford private swim lessons that cost...one private swim lesson is what it costs to have a child go to city lessons for two weeks. Okay? You building a pool...
I wanna piggyback on what Commissioner Christian said, and the talk about, I'm not...you know, anything that fringes on, "I'm not gonna go there," is making me very uncomfortable. I think Leesburg's a better city than that. I understand history and, you know, where swimming pools were and where they are today, and that there's changes that happen. It's no farther from me to go from my house to Venetian Gardens as it's gonna be to go for Palmore Park or one of the neighborhoods close by to Venetian Gardens to go to the swimming pool. And I go to Venetian Gardens, and other people in town that live on my side of town go to Venetian Gardens. And people that live on that, on Venetian Garden side of town, can go to where a swimming pool is, if it's at Susan Street. Leesburg's bigger than that, I know people personally, and I think that people are just a little bit afraid, hurt that you're losing history, and you're saying things that I don't think you really mean, and I please ask you to stop. And we focus on that this is one city, this is a small city, Susan Street is in the heart of town, and it is easy to get there from anywhere, and there are bicycle paths, and there are roadways that already go to it. I'm asking the commission and the city manager to look at if there's feasible to even create another entryway in there to make it better, better accessible, and that we stop this silly, foolish talk about, "I'm not gonna go there."
I'll go wherever it is, but still, going down from two pools to one, and the city limits are bigger than Beverly Shores to Venetian Gardens to Palmore Park.
If the answer is, "Are we gonna have more than one pool?" The answer is no.
Okay.
No, we're going to have one pool. I don't think there's...
So then you will also take out the old Dabney Pool too, since you're already bulldozing Venetian Gardens.
I think when the new one's open, yeah, I think it's gonna be gone.
And Ms. Tucker, the reason our city manager looked at the age of Dabney Pool and recommended that we not add money to it, because it is aging, and in 10 years, we'll be saying the same thing at Venetian Gardens. So that was the recommendation of staff.
Right, y'all have been putting...well, not y'all, y'all predecessors have been putting a Band-Aid on both pools for 20 years.
Just for sake of argument, you know, I think as we moved into this whole spectrum, at least from my perspective, providing you insight and advice on how you manage your community and your money and these type of things, I do want to just say a couple of things, and I'll be brief. I do think we move forward with a plan on how we move forward. Swimming lessons are not stopped. Swimming in Leesburg is not stopped. The same amount of people who swim at two antiquated pools can swim right now, this summer, on July 17th, okay? Everybody's gotta go to the Dabney Pool. So when we made the decision to shut Venetian Gardens, we collectively made that decision because we felt like, and voted and publicly discussed, that the best plan for Dozier Circle was the modified plan that we've come up with. Now, there was some dissension on that, but that's good, that's what collective government's all about. But we didn't stop swimming, we didn't close swimming pools. We said, "We're closing one pool, and for the interim, everybody else, everybody will have to collectively lose Dabney." So I think that decision was made in the sunshine, it was made with good discussion. Number two, we knew that there was gonna be a pool that's coming, and so a pool, a community of Leesburg stature should not operate with two antiquated pools. We don't have a good pool. We have two antiquated pools. And if this body decides that we need a swim facility or aquatic facility that's worthy of this area, which I think we benevolently recognize, will affect positively the region, then we don't need two swimming pools, because we'll have a facility we've been operating since 1920 with two antiquated pools. So if we build one pool, we don't need two pools. And I think we are duty-bound a little bit to recognize the social issues involved with this and the sensitivity, and when it comes to naming of the pool, I think we do need to remember Mr. Dabney. But I think this discussion was healthy, I think we've made good, sound decisions, we've collectively moved forward each way, and at the end of the day, I think the commission will come up with the decision, and where it looks like we're on the precipice, Commissioner Bowen, if that's a motion, you know, we have a motion to continue to investigate up to 2.68 million dollars, and what we'll do...
At the Susan Street facility.
At Susan Street facility. Now, does that mean we're gonna ultimately build a pool? My response was, it sure does feel like it, but it's not done. We've been operating a Dozier Circle for going on three years now, investigating, and we didn't affirmatively say we're gonna build a community center till a month ago. So you can operate in that vacuum, and that's reasonable. So if we get direction tonight, chances are, we're probably gonna build a swimming pool. Now, there's caveats, and chances are, we're probably gonna build a swimming pool. But there's about 100 steps from tonight to a spade going in the ground. And so if Bob's motion is seconded and passed, that'll give us direction to start putting together an RFP to get a design, it'll have us start putting together how we put this site together. So we've got a lot of work, but an affirmative vote on that vote tonight certainly indicates that we're moving in a direction of building a pool.
Good, thank you.
That's the motion.
So everybody understands.
I will second that motion.
And doesn't it also have the teen center in the footprint?
Yes, I think this would include an overall... I mean, the main focus is the swimming pool, but this is a...for me, this is a...I'm looking at a concept of this whole parcel, which would include the teen center, the birch wood, the Bennett walling property, and what we can do there, but with the focus on the swimming pool at 2.6 million dollars, okay? But to see what we can do to really create an identity there with what we've got.
And just for clarity purpose, if you pass that motion, what I'll be...the action that we'll take on a staff-wise is, we will cut 2.68 million dollars out of that cash number, and we will put it into a swimming pool or an aquatic facility fund that you can only spend on aquatics. And towards the other components of that motion, as we get into this budget process, we'll go back, I think we have some residual, we have some unbudgeted Carver Heights CRA money, and I would take some of that to start working on this overall concept in that area, so we can do both at the same time. We can start thinking about how we build the swimming pool, and we can go use some of the Carver Heights CRA money to figure out how we start putting together this larger, broader concept of that area.
But part of that, if we are gonna cut that out, I mean, I actively want us to pursue this, the county and the school board thing, if they're willing to donate property to build a...to put a swimming pool on, there should be some understanding and, you know, that they can still do the same thing, and we put the pool where we think we're gonna get more impact.
I agree, but as the maker of the motion, and your statement was...I don't wanna put you on the spot either, Commissioner, but because your motion was at the Susan Street. I can still go and, you know, contact the county and the school board for the Dabney locations, but I...
And then maybe we do that as a commission too.
Your comments about the Dabney seem a little mixed to me.
No, 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 I think we're...maybe we're doing a bad job of explaining. I think we wanted a Susan Street, but if the school board wants to let other schools come and use it for meets like they've indicated, we want them to give us the Dabney property and do whatever we want to.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, that we get...
Okay, then that's... Okay, then that's, then I got that. I got it.
That's their contribution to partner, is to donate that. The county to do the same.
And maybe not say sell it, but use for the best interest of Leesburg.
Yeah, whatever we want to do with it. So, and I would suggest, because I thought it was very helpful, and we did this before I even got on the commission, is that we had, who, who was, I think it was Belbo did it. He did the shirets, and it wasn't expensive. And we had three meetings at Venetian Gardens. And we can do them at the resource center, and we should have the community come in, and we should talk about the master plan and what we want to do. And we did the same thing with Venetian Gardens. We had a master plan, and we committed to building the park before we knew what we were gonna do with everything else. Well, we had some ideas, but.
And I guess that's kind of what this would be heading towards. It's like, yo, so we done Venetian Gardens, now let's go focus on, go on, on Susan Street and, and.
And I, and I understand the other concepts there with the county and the school.
Call for a vote.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Robach?
Yes. And we're about to enter into public comments, so you're not forgotten. You're gonna get a chance to talk. So we have, we just have to go through real quick, do any city attorney items.
Just what I hope will be the final update on the stay and save in. That deal did close. There's a buyer in possession of the property. Deputy city manager Rankin would know better than I what they're planning to do with it and when. But the city did get a payoff of some $47,000 on its lien, which has been sent to Mr. Williams for deposit into the coffers. And foreclosure sale next month has been canceled.
Thank you. City attorney items?
Manager.
Let me see, city manager items.
No, I have no manager.
Nothing. Okay, so public comments. This section reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunities for praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail in the meeting. They'll be referred to proper staff or be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. And we'd like you to limit them to three minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Betty Stevens Coney, and I'd like to speak to the topic of the pool. I'd like to summarize Cardigy Woodson's quote, and when he said that when, he said, when a race, a culture, I'm putting in there, when a community or a town does not remember their great contributors, then pretty soon those entities will dissolve, and no one will ever remember who or what they were. I'd like for the record then to show that wherever the pool will be placed, when that pool, Dabney Elementary, Dabney Element, I'm sorry, HO Dabney Pool no longer exists, that wherever the pool is placed, it will wear the name HO Dabney Pool.
Thank you. I think there's support for that.
Just like for the record to show that we can leave tonight with the assurance that wherever that pool is, it will wear the name HO Dabney Pool. As so many have spoken and as we have lived through the legacy of one HO Dabney, certainly it bears to name that pool. Thank you so very much for carrying through with that.
Thank you.
I got one comment, brandy effort. When, when the pool closed, Commissioner, I got one request. We got a certain group of people that think that the Carver area is a dangerous area. I've been looking at the Facebook. I've been looking at this and that, and people saying how dangerous it is. It may be. It's dangerous everywhere in this world today. I don't care where you go. But one request I would like, instead of those police officers posted up down there, post them up out there so we can keep some of the trouble down. If whoever may think it's trouble out there, let the police department do more routine patrol. And that way, I believe everybody should be satisfied, and it should give you some sense of comfort. Because I know it's a comfort, it's comfort what's causing these problems, being in that area. So just, just have your police do a little bit more routine patrol. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that's it. Public comments, roll call.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yeah, changing from the pool back to the lake. We have a seaplane ramp. Are we gonna have an opening for that?
Yes, we've been arguing with the contractor a little bit on how they.
You've got some major seams in that.
I got, I got two issues with, with the seaplane ramp, not the ramp per se. They, they did have some issues when they laid the asphalt. They've got some porous areas in there. There's a couple of different ways they can approach it. Did they, is Tracy here? They were scheduled to get that sealed Thursday. Mike, do you know if they got that sealed?
I was there Friday. I sure didn't look at.
They, do you know if they got the, the taxiway for the seaplane ramp sealed?
I believe if it's not done, it's soon to be done.
This week?
Yes.
So once the, once the, once the, once the taxiway is sealed, then we'll go ahead and we'll open up the seaplane ramp.
Okay. We don't have to wait for the docks or anything?
No, well, that, we're gonna still probably end up arguing a little bit with the contractor on that. But the seaplane's use, the seaplane ramp's usable once the taxiway's sealed.
Okay.
And we are in the process of scheduling a ribbon cutting for that. We want Whip Air to be included in that. They're not free until August.
Okay.
So we're, ramp, ramp opening imminently, and ribbon cutting and formal ceremony once Whip gets back in sometime in August.
Okay. Talking about the history of Leesburg, what's with the Mo Moore's House?
We are waiting on a number from Evergreen for the final construction estimate. We hope to have that in the next couple of weeks. I think I sent the commission out in the last week, a quick update on that.
Okay.
So a couple of weeks, we should have the number. Hopefully that matches what the insurance number is. And then you'll have the financial information you may need to make the final decision on Mo Moore's House.
Okay. And the final thing, the, the street scape on Dixie, are we supposed to have trees or something down the median?
The trees are our responsibility. We have our landscape plans, which look very similar to the plans that we did out on east side of 441. They're at DOT now, waiting approval.
Okay.
Once we do approval, we'll bid it. We hope to get the landscape in medians, the trees and all the pretty stuff started, August, September, October. We couldn't start until the FDOT project was finished out. So I know when we've received a number of complaints about the tall grass. That's actually still the contractor from DOT. But DOT wouldn't let us integrate those two projects where we rotate from their street improvement project to our street scape project. DOT wanted to finish it, close it out, do their specs, and then we move in.
Is there irrigation there so that the trees don't die right away?
No, that was, that's part of our project.
Okay.
So that's included in our estimate. So we'll be putting that in.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Bone?
Yeah, so the mall groundbreaking, or grand, whatever they're doing, is this, this Thursday?
This Thursday. Is it 5:30 Mike?
5:30 this Thursday.
5:30 this Thursday. I think right out, it's right in front of Belk there.
Okay, right. All right. So I'll be there for that. Then, I appreciate the update on the Mo Moore's. That was one of my questions too. But also the kitchen and the resource center, they're, where?
They're under contract. We're still moving for construction on that.
Okay, all right. And I've noticed there's a, there's the old eyeglass store that's right there, kind of across from where Tonko Bill is now, the, going out towards the mall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's getting pretty bad there, I've noticed. And so I don't know if there's any code enforcement action on that or that particular property or not.
Al, you'll recall, we started code enforcement on that building some time ago.
Okay, I'll get you an update on that.
Okay. That's it. Glad we made some progress on the swimming pool, and I hope that all works out. I, I think that that can really be tremendous at Susan Street there to do that, put all that together. So, thank you.
Commissioner Christian?
I got a, I'm sure y'all got a bunch of emails on Leesburg runway 321. If you can just update us on.
I'll give you that. And if, if, all those, all those pilots who are listening in, airport, runway 321 is not being closed. The master plan to do the ALP was reviewed. An option in that ALP was to close that runway. I think that, that, that alternative got a little bit of a scratch and sniff from the city commission. I think you guys liked that proposal. That doesn't mean it was going to be done. The direction we sent our consultant was to put a little more detail on a compromise plan. They're working on that. And then we'll go back and we'll finish up the, the master plan with input from everybody. Whether it gets closed or not is to be determined. I would offer that even if you did close the runway, you're probably years and years away from closing it, because it's just functionally how that option would work is, you're not gonna go out and close it tomorrow. You're gonna wait. You're gonna see, you're gonna market property with the potential of it being closed. You know, if that goes on for 10 years and you never get anything, then you're gonna change the ALP. That plan didn't work. But it's a, it's a, it's a step to put it in the ALP to consider it. I, I think that's the biggest, the biggest issue. So, but at the end of the day, final scenario, the ALP's not even done yet. And I'm sure you will hear from the airport board. I'm sure you will hear from all sorts of input. I got, I don't know, Tracy sent me two emails filled with tons of input. I can reassure the commission affirmatively that the airport enthusiasts and pilots in the community do not want to see airport, the air runway 321 shut down.
All right.
So I'm, I'm sure you will consider that input when you make a final decision on the airport ALP.
All right. Echoing Commissioner Bone, I'm happy that we are moving forth with the new swimming pool. Hopefully our community will understand how government works, and they've experienced it firsthand. Government works to move slow, methodical, and it's political. So we did convince Commissioner Bone, he made the motion.
You had a bigger picture.
So he got what he wanted. So, so, so I am happy that we are able to debate items and come with a good conclusion that makes Leesburg better. Also, I reached out to Al, the Berry Park bathrooms were vandalized, and I just want to say our city manager got right on it, dispatched his departments, and I'm sure that we're gonna rectify those situations in the community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Can I have one minute of your time? Because I thought you were gonna bring it up on that parking at the, at the gym, maybe. So since it did come up tonight, and really the lack of parking that there is, is, you know, even, you know, maybe an accelerated look at how maybe we can add some parking relatively quickly and at the gymnasium there.
If it is grass parking.
Yeah. That's it.
Mayor Robach?
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so I think we're continuing to make progress. It is always slow, slower than, than any of us would like. And if any of us got to run the city by ourselves, it'd go a lot faster, but probably wouldn't turn out near as well. So, you know, I think that is good. And, and I do want to echo what Commissioner Bone brought up in the discussion, because I've also seen a lot of things on Facebook that I do think are not representative of our city. And I think one of the biggest learning experiences in a positive way for me being on the commission is being exposed to areas of Leesburg that I never had been growing up here. And I was at Carver Heights last Saturday for Juneteenth. I've been to many functions on Pine Street, and I can tell you, I feel safe all the time. So if 40 years ago you were in an area and didn't feel safe, that doesn't mean it's not safe today. So, you know, if, if the people that, that don't feel safe in those areas are watching this, you know, go out, see the city, you know, go places you haven't been, and, and stop with the, the comments about with advisiveness, because it's not productive for, for anyone. So.
Can I add to that? One second. I was talking about after that thrift store, we have a box truck that I did buy from Row Mike Lumber years ago. So it sits on our thrift store property. So I noticed we got some mattresses that was styled up the side. So I told my manager, why you got those mattresses out there? Well, come to find out, Larry, which is her classmate, and she's younger than me, he was, he was homeless. He had created him a, a little house under our thrift store truck. So I came, I had a little attitude with Larry. So he says, what's, why the hostility? Well, I said, Larry, you can't be on our property. He had put a note for us, passed and signed up. I thought my manager did it. I said, Larry, you can't put your stuff on my property. He said, I don't want nobody stealing it. Well, Larry, it's on my property. So he said, aren't you the preacher? He said, why the hostility? He says, I wanna talk about the Lord. So on my deacon's day, he was a little more, hey, you talking to me. So I felt bad, Larry had got a wreck. He had wrecked around the tree like it was his front yard. And I came back, I put everything. I said, Larry, get your stuff that you want and put it in a pot, and called the city to come and grab the rest of the stuff, put it in the dumpster. So I felt so bad, and I came back. He had everything so neat, ready for the dumpster. I saw him down the road. I stopped and gave him 20 bucks. I said, Larry, you know what? I appreciate what you've done. So, so I just want to say, we have people who, who are homeless situations. I mean, this guy grew up in Leesburg, went to Leesburg High School. He even knew, hey, you grew up on Vine Street, right down the road from me. But he just got in, in a dire strait. And so we have some issues within our city, and he didn't cause any problem. I felt safe. I confronted him, and he was just as nice as he could be, but he was just in the wrong place at the wrong time. And I just think we have to engage, as Mayor said, go to different parts of our city, get to know people in our city who may not look like us, who we didn't grow up with. Me and Tucker went to school together. But get to know people who, you know, who you normally don't get a chance to talk to. So I just want to encourage to those who are watching, you know, get out, get to know people, and you'll find out that we don't have as many differences as we think we do. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That, me adjourned.